Okay, here we go. That is. I would like to call the Montezma Cortez R A. School District R A one. Work session and regular session. We're meeting to order. Stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to set the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda.
Right here, second.
I think it's.
Motion's been made by Sherri Wright, seconded by Jeanette Hart. Any discussion? Okay. You call for the question, Deb.
Rachel. It's an irony. Hart. Or Hall, sorry.
I.
Hart.
I.
Noise.
I.
Rice.
I.
Who else?
I.
Wright.
I.
Oh, who did I answer for?
I'm gonna be going last.
Oh, Ed, I answered for you, Ed. I'm sorry.
Oh, Rice and Wright, okay. Okay, discussion items. First, the presentation of the audit, we'd like to welcome Lori Haley, our auditor. She's gonna go over. Audit with us, you should have received that in your. In your email today, probably sometime, right?
Yes.
Was it today?
Yeah.
My gaze gets kind of.
So. I can go into more or less detail. I thought I would just summarize. You guys. The points of the pages that. More relevant than that. This audit is made more for state auditors and C P E. For the Department of Education than for usefulness to you guys as a board. In front of the audit. I don't really even talk about. It's based all the way to page. Let me tell you guys this, all the way to page. Fifteen. They convert this part of the audit is converted to like you were for public profit. Audit. And it used to be a little bit more user friendly and I would talk about it, but since then. It had the Colorado statute where they now include the error in this. So this makes it really skewed because it's like they go in and calculate actual reports and stuff of how much you guys would owe. Had all of your employees that work for you right now. Are on, we didn't go on here. So it has you owing like thirty five million dollars. So when you throw that all in here in the scheme. And then they do actual studies like so one year this shows a great big loss because you don't have funded as well. Next year, they've done different like this year it shows you made ten million dollars. And it's all just. Stuff that really. You don't even want to learn. I didn't want to learn it. Yeah, I'd say it's not something I would reach out for, so what you really need to look at. Or like the first two pages I told you are sixteen and seventeen. You guys have a general fund. We have some special revenue funds. I have special revenue. In your general fund, when you see budgets and stuff, you have. A general fund. You have an insurance reserve fund. You have a technology fund. You have a student activity fund. And you have a preschool fund. That are all included in this one column, general fund. It's like when you're doing your budgeting and stuff, you're gonna have more funds because the auditor. State auditors and so long like C D E just consider all that general fund. So that general fund is lumped into all of those. A little bit confusing, you're gonna see two different parts in here, a pupil activity fund. The pupil activity fund within the general fund that's net in there is. Basically. Items that are funded by the school district. There football and basketball and cheerleading and stuff that's funded by the district that are netted in there. And then you're gonna see over here further on the right, there's a student activity fund in this group. That student activity fund is more like clubs and groups that fund themselves. You just have their money. And hold it for them. So that's confusing when you're talking about student activity and student activity. So when you look in there, page sixteen is a balance sheet. Balance sheet is a snapshot in time. And it's like if you close your doors where you're at, it has how much cash you have, how much you. And your assets receivables, how much you owe. And it comes down to what your net worth is at the time. So. That says total fund balance. Right below the path right there, that's what each fund has in it, that's how much you're, you started out July first twenty. Twenty. You have to think back on your twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. On this year, that's how much you're starting the money with. So if you look in there. So then if you flip back and forth, you wanna look on page seventeen. See on the bottom, fund balance beginning of the year in your general plan, that's what you started out with for this audit period. You gain net change and fund balance. So the bottom line there is how much you have. Starting out for the year that's already six months into right now. So I'm trying to say it just in simple terms so you guys have that going forward. See each one of those. You'll see the general fund for that. The food service fund, which always is a struggle anymore in the last few years. So in these extra handouts I gave you. You will look and you will see that the second one. It says prior year comparison, so I just do a little extra on this one and let you look for the service fund from your, of your. Let you know because it's. Need to keep funded right now. This year made money. You'll see you guys transferred eighty five into this fund fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty one, you guys transferred a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund. It's a little awkward comparing this, all of this stuff. Year to year right now because of COVID. A lot of stuff got moved over. It's like general fund didn't spend as much money in fiscal year twenty one, the one I just audited. As it normally does, but it will spend more. The reason behind that is because COVID, you guys got a lot of grants. Fiscal year twenty one in the governmental designated grant fund, you've received. Think that my last count it was eleven or twelve more grants in fiscal year twenty one than you had fiscal year. Some of them were great big grants, I feel like it was around three million dollars more. And money that you guys had run through grants in fiscal year twenty one versus fiscal year twenty. So like in previous years, I would come and we could talk and you could look back and compare one year to another and. Stuff, but this is really hard times to do any comparing because stuff that's normally spent in the general fund was covered over in some of these grants. So that's the reason you got a gain in the general fund. Is because of some of the. The expenses were down in the journal fund because they were paid for with the grant. That's not sustainable, that's not what's gonna happen in future years, but that's what's happened. In this grant year. So if only, if you look them back and forth, I have no issues with any of these funds on page sixteen or seventeen, the housing, the quality budgeted, the housing reasonable amounts. Anybody wants to go in detail, you're always welcome to meet with Kyle or myself and go over those. But one, I do want to point out here real fast. I plan in your book things like if you wanna go to page nineteen, you compare your budget to actual for general. Page twenty, budget to actual for food service. Page twenty one, budget to actual for grants. And you'll notice grants say zero, I'm just popping this in for somebody to have that because grants are what's called expenditure driven. A person gives you the grant money. And it is not your one until you spend it. So if they give it to you and you have it, then you consider it as a liability because you owe it back to them. If you spent the money and they haven't paid you yet, then it's receivable. Grant money is just an in natural. It's, it's just if you don't spend it yet, give it back to them. Ideal. And along with that. So those are just there, the one I want to talk to you about. That is concerning to me is your self insurance fund. It's on page twenty four and twenty five. It has been going down. This year. On page twenty four. This year it lost. Six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Last year fiscal year twenty, it lost four hundred and some thousand dollars. The year before that, it lost close to three hundred and some thousand dollars. So in the last three years. You don't even have a year's reserve left in there. It's like talked to me, I mentioned to the board last year, I mentioned it to the things, it's like. This is not gonna sustain itself at the way you're doing here right now. So I don't know what your right answers are, but that is something that you guys are gonna have to address. Because it's definitely not sustainable, the way it's going right now. Six seventy two, I can't survive it, so like a million, three million, four hundred dollars is lost in three years. When the school. Before they got this built up. You guys have to understand if you, if this loses money, the general fund has to fund it. So there were times in the previous years that six hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars were being moved from the general fund to this one. So. That is the only thing I really wanted to add there. The other thing I would like to point out to you guys, and this is just for raises. Ideal. Is the other little sheet I gave you is a summary of per pupil funding. And then some of you guys are aware well, I guess probably even know, but I always have to point this out. They do a formula with C D E and stuff and they come into what, how much money you're gonna get. Per student. Then they take how many property taxes you have and then they offset that with how much money you get. So like some of the other funds like with Kinder Morgan moved in and stuff, they were able to collect money and build money. The school didn't get any extra money. You just paid more in property taxes and the Colorado Department of Education paid you less money, you still got the same per pupil account. So that's one of the reasons it's really hard for the school district, you know, like a lot of the others have built up, this is one of the reasons. So if you look down in there in the bottom third is your per pupil. Like fiscal year twenty, you guys got eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars a student. Fiscal year twenty one, you got seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars a student. And then up above tells you how it's funded and how much came from property tax and state equalization. They always have a recision, they take some of your money. Then to come down here, you can also compare your student count. Fiscal year twenty, you had two thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven students. Fiscal year twenty one. You had two thousand, seven hundred and two. Where's my little thing? Oh, I'm doing the wrong thing, that's the per pu, okay. Per pupil counted that you guys total and then down here below, you collect all the money, but then per pupil count you pay to the charter schools. So it shows you how much Swos, Battle Rock and Kiva had. Both years. Come down to the net. You guys as a school receive, had a hundred and twenty eight less students. You take that times a seven thousand dollars, that's nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars you guys can lose. So I'm just pointing out how student count really affects your bottom line. It's all this worksheet is for is to. Let you guys realize that.
Yes, thank you for that visual.
Mom's asleep tonight. Is there anything you guys would like me to go into more detail? During this meeting?
You have a magic wand?
I don't have a magic wand, I wish I did.
So do we.
And I wish, I mean, this is, and it's hard to get this with everything stuff too, and I always feel like I'm buying the eight ball one and even have given you these numbers. Already six months, you're already six months into this year. I got told some of you guys before, I always have like people will ask me, how we wanna know is if we're doing okay? And I'm like, oh, six months ago you were fine. Six months is a long time, things can. Now take you the wrong direction. Five, six hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. When you, and then when you, and then you look at these, what, this losing sixty students is five hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars.
The state's been talking about redoing the School Finance Act. Would that help us any, since we no longer have Kinder Morgan now?
You probably know more about it than I do, Sherri, you go to those meetings. I just.
It's supposed to help us, but they keep looking back at where you have all this money, but Kinder Morgan's no longer giving us money, so.
Well, and it's not gonna hurt you, see that's gonna hurt the counties and the towns. Much more than it's gonna hurt the school because yours, your, that's gonna keep you, that was a whole idea behind this back when they first did it was to make you the school state.
Right.
You know, and they had a purpose for that. So they, I mean, honestly. Kinder Morgan not paying as much as gonna hurt the school nearly as much as it is the county, county. County.
I knew that.
But that's, I mean.
I guess I'm just asking, do I need to be more driven? To get our legislature to redo our finance act?
I don't know.
That's a tough question.
I don't know, I mean, it's a, how. I don't know what they're proposing. I kind of. Have a thing that I, I can't really remember when they, what they proposed and what they actually do. I do the same thing on taxes, but I just wait till they actually do it and then I.
What they're saying right now, I thought they're actually doing, it's two different things.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I don't, yeah, you would have to sit down and run the numbers through to see how. My philosophy is always what? Net in your pocket.
Yeah.
They talk a whole bunch of big numbers and then it comes down to what actually hits your pocket and that's the only thing that matters.
And then they owe us thirty five million dollars of back taxes, so.
I, I can honestly tell you, I haven't studied what they've been talking about doing.
Okay.
I just, by me too on specific things I can, I just.
So we need to work on our expenses.
So, yeah, so we need to kind of maybe focus. On our self insurance.
Yes. Yeah, the self insurance is the only thing, when I got done with this audit, it's the only thing that has me concerned.
So what's something we can do on the self insurance, so that's what I was looking at too, that's gonna be my question was, any recommendations?
I, this has been a hard thing since it started. Now the self insurance thing, you know, it's. I don't know the right answers, I mean, you think, yeah, let's, we're gonna use our own money and make more money. Sometimes it works out, but this has been a struggle since it started, the self insurance fund. There were years, and I'm not exaggerating, general funds transferring six to nine, nine hundred thousand dollars over to fund this.
About three years ago.
Well, I, I think it was mismanaged.
It was.
Several years ago and we're.
When it first started.
Yeah.
So.
And then.
Well, it was, it was mismanaged when it first started.
Yeah.
There were some issues and things and then it went down, but then three years ago it was healthy.
Yeah.
So like, like you said, the first year it lost. Two hundred and eighty five, two hundred and some thousand dollars three years ago. Four years ago, it made a little bit and it was healthy. Last year it lost four hundred and some thousand and this year it lost six hundred and eleven thousand.
And I think that we need to give Cindy the direction to explore that and figure out what.
I don't know what the, I mean. I definitely don't understand, like some of like back to this, some of the actual, I mean, how do they figure out, and I understand like there's stock loss. And you have this maximum. But how they're coming up with what numbers are. And then it's hard for Kyle to know what to do when there's a lot of. Not solid. Concrete numbers. I don't know what's better, if you have a concrete number and deal with it or.
I've talked to other CFOs that have done both and exactly what Lori said, you can have the self insurance fund where. You can hope and do your best to try and make money, but it's kind of out of your hands because people. Get sick or getting illnesses out of your control. Or you go to something like Blue Cross Blue Shield. And you know what it is and it might be a little expensive, but you know every year what you have to budget to pay for it because that premium will be set and then that will be it for the year.
Like self insurance is easier when you have money. And when you don't.
A lot of things are easier.
That's what I mean.
I agree with you.
It's easier to make money when you have money.
Yeah.
The same thing, it's like if you just think of yourself as an individual. If I have a hundred thousand dollars in the bank that I know I can get to if I need medical insurance and I can pay really low medical insurance with, you know, a high deductible. You know, five years out of ten, I can make money. And then that tenth year or the seventh year I have been in wreck or have a heart attack and then. You have the money there, I mean.
How many districts do this, Kyle, do you do?
Yeah, I feel like it's easier, just like any of this. If you have money, when you save money, it's easier.
One, I would say. You're less. In a lot of number bigger districts, as Lori said, that have money to kind of support it if they have to.
The, the one thing is, is I mean, just from personal experience, I know the city has had self insurance, they've been self insured for years. And they've never had these struggles. I mean, even when.
Haven't had an audit in four years either.
Well, yeah, that's true too. That's, that's what.
They've had a bunch of embezzled.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. But, and that's very true, we, we do definitely have to take that into consideration. But I mean, even, even before, I mean, the, the school district's been on self insurance for years.
We would.
Yeah, we went to self insurance when Tom Burris was here.
No, we didn't. Not this self insurance fund, I don't think.
Were you saying twelve years, it was about twelve years?
Four years here, that I just went backwards, I have in there, it was a little bit, the two hundred year right there was healthy. You had at least three or four years in there that were clear, so four, I said, and so ten or eleven years, I don't know what you consider a long time.
Yeah.
Let's say thirteen years on the outside.
I know when I quit twenty years ago, we did not have it.
No, but, yeah.
I think in thirteen, fourteen years on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
Somewhere on the, um, but you know, I mean.
It's definitely workable if you can do it, but you also, like he's saying. If a bunch of your employees are fifty five years and older.
Right, right. Well, that's, that's, that's the big thing.
One of the things that I would, looking back is. It's been kind of used as a tool to recruit and train. So every year that the self insurance fund, the company, the manager comes to us and say, hey, your premium's gonna increase by so many dollars. It looks like historically management would say, the district will take the difference, don't give it to the employee. And so that ultimately has.
And that has, that, I, I mean, I know that that's happened too.
Kind of back what I say to the net, the dollar, the general fund pays that one way or another.
Right.
You either absorb it. Like you're doing now, or you pay the people more. And they pay it.
Right.
One way or another.
It's coming out of our budget.
And say one way or another, your general fund didn't pay six hundred thousand dollars, but. It's, it's all in one.
Somebody did.
If this can't fund it, the general fund will have to fund it.
Right.
So all I'm saying is there is, I mean, like you say, like what you're saying, and I totally understood the philosophy behind it, it's like. You knew you were gonna have a loss this year, we don't want the employees to have to pay for it. It's not much different than having this loss or paying the employees to pay for it.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying there, I mean.
Yeah, you're right.
Fund is a general fund and if this fund goes down. Then the general fund has to pay for it. So. I'm only talking out loud, but in management, it makes more sense to have it all planned out and have it that way than to just lose over here.
Right. Right.
Makes more sense to have it forward and have employees, give the employees the money to pay for. And have it funded, this fund funded itself and then you really know in the general fund what it's costing to have an employee.
Right.
Does that make, I mean, make sense because like over here. Kyle, what I'm saying is, it's like. Kyle works to figure out what an employee costs you. Part of that is all of your employee benefits. So you, he's running all these numbers in the general fund and then all these funds on people. But it's not real numbers because you lost six hundred thousand dollars over here that really cost your school that much more money, so the employees really cost you that. Does that make sense, I mean, it's all one place or I'm up. That makes sense, but you know, my, I just, my mind is simple, simplifies things, it's all the same. So when Kyle's figuring out Lori. Second grade teacher Lori Haley cost you forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars because he has to throw in all the benefits, it's not a real number. Because they actually cost you more because this fund lost six hundred thousand dollars.
Right. That, that makes perfect sense.
So you're, by not doing this fund correctly, you're skewing your numbers. So I would just, I mean, I'm just saying it's an issue, you should either. Do this fund correctly. Charge whatever it costs and make this fund prosper and do right and have a good reserve. Or go to Blue Cross Blue Shield. One way or another, so, because he can't figure out and tell you, I know, like you guys would like to know what, what's an employee costing.
Yes.
And I don't, I feel like the numbers are skewed. When this fund lost six hundred thousand.
Or if we're trying to plan, like we talked about salary schedules on a multi-year scale. This has one bad year.
Yeah, we're not gonna have another one next year or two years down the road be even worse. So we've got, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, that's, I'm, this is a concern.
Thank you.
But everything else, I'm not concerned about, everything seemed in budget line, things, general fund did make money. Made sense to me because I would go in and look and then like some of the salaries that are normally paid there will go back to being paid there or moved over because of all the COVID monies. You, they made rules that you were able to move money back and forth and. It's a hard job right now to go back and forth and figure out where, what's, what's a sustainable amount, what the general fund will be paying on a normal year.
Right.
Yeah, because.
In three years maybe.
And eleven grant, eleven new grants and three of them great, great big grants, three million dollars in extra money. It's a lot of comparable.
We can only use them certain ways.
Yeah, and, and it's not comparable.
You have to do that, you have to make sure where.
I take last year's audit and I put numbers over the top of it when I write it in and. Things that jump out at me, I, I call Kyle, it's like, so why is this number, or, I mean, you know, those are the reasons.
Thank you.
Yeah, but. Any of you guys, the new people, if you want to come meet, talk more in detail. Feel like it's, like this, it's really hard to talk details, if you're interested, more than welcome. Prefer you didn't do it during tax season. You're welcome.
You will not take priority.
You're welcome to be honestly, and or Kyle can answer your questions if you need one to do, he said I, definitely.
Okay, this is Jeanette Hart and I was just telling her that you have. Will be a branch.
Okay, absolutely. Let me know when you would like to meet, so we have it set up. Cause I am gonna be in and out this part of the year and I'm just, I mean, January's definitely better than April. I'm joking about it.
She told me she starts getting taxes on January third.
Oh, I'm sure.
We do. But you know, that, I mean, just, I just have to know ahead of time.
Yeah, I, I will make a.
And then if you have specific things you would like me to address ahead of time, anything, if you let me know, I'll make sure I have. Figured out, or if it comes up, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori, very much.
This has to be a little bit later, so this really does need to be approved tonight.
It's on our agenda.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Alrighty, okay. Parent and staff summary of the Healthy Kids Survey. We have. Any of that information? Like in the, in our. Somebody wants to fill this in, I have. We, did we not vote the last time not to do the Healthy Kids Survey? You were so.
You're gonna talk to.
Why are we on discussion now?
I thought we had, I thought we kept it open.
We didn't.
We did, we did leave it open.
Yeah.
I, I think what I recall is with parent notification. Right.
Taking the survey or?
To opt. To opt.
And then I'm, I'm very concerned, I would like for the board to be able to read the survey before it's ever considered. Because the, the questions are the same that were on the last one I read. I would, I would say the board should vote no. Because it's not our responsibility. I, I would say the board should vote no, because it's not our responsibility to take care of the community, commit this.
And there are two surveys, I know you are aware of it, but there's two surveys, there's one that's kind of, um.
There's a censored and uncensored, she's, she's referring to the censored version even.
Right.
Yeah, it was horrible, it was horrible, when I, because I, I received it from a parent.
Yeah.
And it was.
Well, you, and you can, you can Google it, I mean, it, it comes up, you can see the whole survey.
This was one that a parent sent me, and I'm going, that's tough, that's not.
I, I, I don't think.
Avery mentioned it, if you're not, yeah, it, it's a joke, the kids don't even pay attention to that.
And the fact that middle schoolers think that is also like kind of scary, because the questions are very harsh.
Well, and there's two different tests that the middle school and the high school take, there's two different, they, they take, they're censored. Cody and I, Cody and I met with, um, with Laurel Schaefer at the Health Department, um.
You know, we, we actually had quite a bit of discussion on that. Um, and I have, I have a little bit of info, if I pass one of each of these down, I'll try, make sure you get one, too. One of those, one of those, um, and so these address a lot of the issues that I've been hearing. A- at least as well as, you know, any I've heard, but, um, quite a few of the issues were regarding, um. The accuracy of the survey, I think was a big one, I mean, you just mentioned that as well, and as far as addressing accuracy, you can see how the survey does over time. And so if, if kids are not taking it seriously, you can see that from year to year, you know what I mean, you have a lot of data from previous last thirty years. So they're, they're known to be fairly accurate, even despite a lot of kids maybe messing around on them. From what I've heard, is some of those sensitive topics are very challenging, but what I've heard is that they're actually very useful when a student is thinking that actually has those issues.
Do you really think it's our business to know if a child is having sex with another, another, same sex?
We're gonna end up with more teen pregnancies than we can handle.
I don't think it's our.
And we're gonna be, be reactive to that.
I don't, see, I, I don't feel like it's our, that, that's, that's a parent's business.
Yeah, I think we need to take the gray lay out of that.
Well, I mean, parents can opt out, too, you know, that's.
If they know, if they know.
No, no, that, that's my, that's my biggest thing, is I think we need to do a lot better at, we need to do a lot better at making sure parents know when the survey's gonna happen.
And then they need to read it, too, before they, before their child gets it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, let's, I think we, that's my thought, is we send it to them, we send them, um, the, the ability to opt out very easily. And let them know what the survey looks like, that way it's in the parent's hands, not ours. Uh, but the survey is used for so many other things, other than the school.
What happens if it's accidentally then given to a student whose parents opted them out?
Yeah, because I, I've heard, I've heard reports where kids are being pressured by teachers to take the test.
Well, that's, I.
So, I mean, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing from parents.
Yeah, I, I think we do a lot better at making sure they can opt out, and the student knows that as well. Um, I, I think, especially with, you know, teachers, we need to make sure our staff knows that we're not gonna be pushing this on anybody. A, a student has the ability to opt out on their own, if, or if they don't like a question, they don't even have to answer it. You know, there's a lot of, and if, you know, it's, it's on the, all online, so you don't have to, uh, it's not like you're marking stuff. If a question's not relevant, it doesn't even ask anymore, it, it can discontinue that line of questioning.
So, and my other question would be, is who is monitoring all this, and what time could this time be better used with our students than monitoring this survey?
As far as, who, what do you mean?
How long does it take?
It's in a classroom somewhere.
How long does it take?
Thirty minutes, and I also, we've always gone on paper, never online.
You guys have done it all on paper? I was told that you can do it online and it discontinues struggles, but that's.
It takes a decent amount of time, thirty minutes, depending on if you get like the extra part.
So do you, do you have, and excuse my ignorance, but do you have a time, like a homeroom or something to do it in, so that it's not taking out class time?
Yes, we have a homeroom period, I think it's about thirty minutes long, it's after fourth period, the fourth fifth, and that's usually when we do it.
Do you do it every year?
Yes.
Okay.
And this says every other, every year.
This is every two years, um, but I've been told that we.
Cody, my concern is. We're, we're hearing two different stories.
On what, it being administrative?
You're saying every other year, Avery's saying every year, well, this, this says every other, and, um, you say it can be online, Avery says it's. On paper, have you ever heard a teacher pressure a student to take it?
Oh, I haven't, but. Not necessarily, I've always seen teachers are like, oh, take it if you want, like, take it if you don't.
So.
I, I personally never have heard, but I also have very respectful teachers.
Good, I like to hear that.
Press the noise. The meeting notes from November state that Stacy Hall made a motion, but withdrew it, and no vote was taken. And then it says Director Hall requested that the board be provided with the past results to this survey to help them understand it better.
And we don't have the past results, correct? No, not the, I haven't seen them.
I thought Eric, somebody said that to us.
Oh, yeah, no, you, you're right, yeah, I think it was.
We did get him in an email.
Yeah, just for one school?
It was just for the high school.
Yeah, so it was, it was just for, um, the high school and the mid-school. But it showed like twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen.
I don't remember.
Like, it showed the.
So, kind of.
Yeah, we, I, I remember getting those, the, the one thing that I, I have is, is, is when meeting with Laurel. Yes, you know.
Who's Laurel?
The, she is the one that is in charge of it at the Health Department, Laurel Schaefer is her name. Um, I can't remember what her title is at the Health Department. For managing the county, yes. She, um, she, she gave us a very good presentation, I was, I was very impressed with it. I can't say that I.
She gave you a presentation, she gave you a presentation.
No, Cody and I went down and met with her.
Maybe she should come here and give.
You know what, and I, I, I think it, that's a good idea. I, I agree with some of it, I disagree with some of it, I think we have to understand that we are, we have the captive audience, which are the students.
Yeah.
And, and the, the grants, the grants, um, help facilitate a lot of student-based. Things, um, as in S, S Y C.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, they, they, that's how they get their money is from this grant, and, um.
So I, I've been.
Some suicide prevention stuff, um, some teen pregnancy stuff, and the one thing that we have to understand in this county. We're, we have the highest teen pregnancy rate in the state, and we have the second highest suicide rate in this state. We've got to help our kids, and, uh, uh, it, yes, it is a, a sensitive subject. And, um, but there are two different tests that they can take, there's the, the big test, or there's the censored test.
I think that we need.
And, um.
Additionally, if we, if we don't have.
The board should have the presentation.
We, yeah, we, I think it'd be really.
And, and we said that when we left.
If we don't have this, uh, the data from this test, we have to use regional data, and that will include Durango, and I think that's kind of one thing that we really need to distinguish ourselves from, is we're, we're not Denver, we're not Durango. We're Cortez, and we need to be able to identify our own problems, not their problems.
Makers, Duck Creek, and Dolores doing this test?
Makers is, Dolores isn't.
Dolores is not.
From what I heard last board meeting.
And, yeah, listen.
So I, I don't know, I, I, I thought Makers had opted out, but I.
Oh, maybe, maybe it's one of them, I heard some last board meeting, we discussed that one of them was doing it and one wasn't.
Okay.
I, I would like to sit here and presentation and, and see the test.
You know, Sherry, I think it's there to have the presentation, so that we get the whole, the whole story.
Right.
But I am totally against it, and, um, we've had eleven other grants, and why can't some of those grants be used for something that we need for this F Y C S or whatever it is? Rather than present our kids with, with all of this, I do not think that they should be subjected to answering.
Cody, did you find out that we do not have grant money?
Yeah, I, I know, I know that, um, and I actually am of the opinion, if we aren't, we should be in some, so, um. You know, we, I think, from what I've heard, we only have an application out right now for, um, something with, uh, a counselor for.
Okay.
So it's just an, an application right now, right?
Referring to is this data is used for those organizations to apply for grants, because the data is there.
Okay.
So those specific organizations outside of schools, or you can say, there's a percentage of high tech, or teen pregnancy, so they can go out and say, this is the data we have based on this survey, and they, it's, it's not.
Does it come correctly, does it come to us?
We can apply for, but it's based on the data.
So they can, they can make a grant, but they don't have to spend it on us. They can spend it on us.
If our kids are in this community, it would always be these kids here.
Yeah, it's like our S F funds.
So there's what, like five different other places that use that data that isn't with the school district?
Right.
Many different other people with the community.
Can we use our S F funds for some of this instead of?
Well, we're not those organizations, right, so we're not dedicating our resources to teen pregnancy and suicide. But it's not, well, that's not our focus, those are those organizations' focus, so we should.
Okay, I still think that we need to bring them in, because I'm so, I'm still so against it.
So, y- yeah, I'm kind of.
Couple of things, um, that I'd like to really talk on this, too, that as a teacher that put this on in the classroom when I was teaching, um, Avery was way too nice on it. It was horrendous what I saw.
How you answered.
Saying and doing to each other and stuff.
The what?
It was horrendous what people, you know, kids would say to each other and stuff about this, and, 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 you know, when you've got a student in there. That. You, you've got one that's gonna, they're gonna be bragging, number one, hey, yeah, I had sex five times last week, you know? And, and then the next one over here is, oh, God, there must be something wrong with me then, you know, and it's not right, it's not right to have that.
I'll tell you.
If you go to the, if you go to the opting out deal, um, I think the numbers are gonna get so skewed, what good is it gonna do for anybody to do that? So th- then it's gonna come to the point where anybody that's using it is gonna say, well, this isn't a real true number of our population, because you only have forty percent of them answering it, so what, what, what good is that gonna be?
And so does that skew our numbers on us having the har- highest fifteen teen pregnancies or the highest suicides at this? Because it's skewed, it will skew the numbers. So if the kids are being. Non-legitimate with it, then it's gonna skew the numbers, we're gonna get a bad rep anyway. Okay, um, I still think we need to have them come in.
I might add, though, that when you look at, um, like birth rates, and when you look at, um, death rates, or.
Sure.
Whatever, those are all county-bound.
I, I agree.
So, um, if, uh, a minor, let's say, say has a child outside of the county, that could be a little off, but generally, like suicidal rates. They're, they're pretty, they're based off of, like, those numbers are actual, they're actual.
Hard numbers.
And they're not, they're not really attached to this survey in a sense.
So could, so could a student answer that and say, well, I had sex five times last week, and be made fun of and then go out and commit suicide? I mean, let's be realistic, this, this is really, I, this is really, this is really a sensitive, but there's an odd.
So, no, I, I.
It's one, it's one line.
I think, I think that would be a myth. Um, I, I don't think that's accurate, I don't think that actually happens, um, you know, there's a lot of data that shows that the kids who are asked these questions that are very relevant to them, they feel hurt. Um, and so a lot of times, it, they feel like they have a voice, is what I've been told. So it's, it's, it's hard, I think it's harder for people who have not gone through or really.
But you've been told by somebody who's pulling to do the test.
Well, I've been, I've been told by a lot of people.
Have you talked to parents?
No, I, well, I, you know, I've talked to quite a few parents, but not a lot of the parents that are taking the.
So I, I, I think.
And if there is about my version, let the kids do it online at home.
Yeah, they, they don't have to do it at school. I like that, I like that.
Rain, do you have anything to add, or anything to this?
I'm not really for this, personally.
Um, so can, can we go ahead and assume that, um, maybe we would all be in, even though we may not agree, but we'd be willing to hear Laurel come in and present her case to us?
She has time.
And, and, um, see where.
January if she has time?
Yeah, if we could do that, if we could get her to come in and, um, because when are we scheduled to do this again, if we, we have to opt in in January, correct?
No, it, my, I, my understanding in talking to her is, our district wouldn't take this until two, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, but that's not what we're hearing from a student.
Okay, so that's a concern.
Yeah.
Okay, but. So we'll go hear that from her, okay, okay, so let's move along here then, um.
The fourth is our next work, is our work session?
Okay. Board retreat.
Yeah, so you want me to, go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, and then we'll throw in.
So, so there's, there's been a couple of things that, um, we've been talking at, as an executive director team. Is just looking at, in a sense, a board retreat, and so I wanna know your feedback on, on what you guys want to see for a board retreat. There's a, there's a, a bunch of different formulas that people do retreats in, I'm usually used to doing my retreats in the summer. And we go meet, let's say, somewhere where we can all just close the doors and just talk and hash things out. Um, due to the fact that we've onboarded several new board members in the last, um. You know, since the last meeting, and, and I do recognize that many of you are in education, but I, I wanna kind of give you what we're calling the state of the district. Uh, from each department and from each, uh, administrative site, because I'm not sure how transparent. We have been in the past, and as we move forward, I wanna make sure that you know exactly what H R is working on. Um, that you know what, uh, finance is working on, that you know the, the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and threats that are at our, our schools. And then we can come together, and, and so, so the, the story behind this is, this strategic plan that was built prior expires this year. And I wanna make sure that as I move forward to create a new strategic plan for you, I love the, the steps that we're taking before. But it needs to, in my opinion, become more robust, where I provide to you, based off of your feedback on the state of the district. A three to five year plan of what is finance gonna do? What is H R gonna do, how are we gonna, um, support our teachers with our comprehension, or, um. Uh, what's it called?
It's not compression.
Compression study, um, what, what is our fleet plan? Like, what is our plan for buying buses and vehicles, and I think what you need and what the community needs is just to see where are we right now? And then where do we plan to go in three to five years, and how are we gonna get there, but I don't wanna sit in, in a cloak of darkness and decide where we're gonna go without you guys knowing. Where we are today, and then we can come up with a decision, and you can provide us guidance of where we're gonna go. And so some people would do a retreat in three days, they'd do three days in a row.
That's unheard of, because everybody works, so.
Right, and, and, and that's why it's like, some, I'm just sharing what, what, you know, models that I've seen, some people do three days in a row. Some people do a couple of days and then one, some people do three sessions of one day apiece. Um, some even do half-days at a time, but I think it's a lot of information to do the whole district in three days in a row, because your eyes, I mean, it's, it's a lot of information. I think sometimes smaller comprehensible chunks, like doing a couple of, um, connected directors and executive directors makes more sense. But that's why this is a, an item, because I wanna hear what works for you as we look, because I'm, it would be my goal to provide you with this information. Um, January and or early February would be, that, that's what I have in my head, but I want your feedback, and I'm willing to listen and.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you're wanting to meet with your teams, bring stuff back to us.
And, and create a formal presentation, in a work, it's, it's, the board retreat is kind of like what you'd call a work-study session.
Okay, so what? What I would kind of like to see, that would be fine, but then I would also like to see a whole separate board retreat. Um, you know, you can bring your information to us, and then we can have a whole separate retreat and, and go over. Um, what you, the information you've given us and some other thoughts, ideas, um, things that we would like to work on as a board.
Could we do, could you bring your stuff to us, like, say, a work session?
I can do whatever you would like.
And then, because I, I kind of agree with what Sherry says, if it's a board retreat, we need to do our board, but, so I agree with that. So, and, and possibly, maybe even if we do a board retreat, we would, we abso- absolutely need the information. So we could have H R come in for an hour or so, two hours, and talk about insurance. Or whatever else we have a question over that H R does. Or whatever else we have a question over that H R does. We could have Kyle come in and talk about budget and where we would like to see the budget, the direction we'd like to see it go. You've, you've told us it in one direction. I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas and let somebody else talk. I'm, I'm not pressed anymore, so I need quiet.
And I am one that I know I cannot do three days.
Yeah.
Well, there are several of you.
Know that I can do the two days. I mean.
Right.
I'm kind of a, yeah, so I'm thinking we probably just need to discuss when we would like to have it and.
We could, and we could send you an email too. I just wanted you to all hear it kind of at once and, and give you the rationale behind it. And just provide, provide you with really the state of the district and what's, what's been happening and what, you know, because this is kind of a great time because a lot of new eyes are looking on situations that have been happening for quite some time. And so what, what my new staff is seeing is actually, uh it paints a, a, a pretty compelling story on where we are. So I think hearing what they've seen is can be very beneficial as you lead the district forward.
Well, and something that we all need is calendars. We need to, where are we going to be next year on calendars? Where are we going to be next year on schools? What are we going to teach? Where are we going to be on curriculum? And so I, I think that's something that the board needs to discuss and come to a consensus and then see if we're right. Clarification, it's beaten at me. We have too many buses breaking down, so.
As, as a newbie, I would say even like, I don't know, if it worked for Lane to do something like on a Friday afternoon, maybe, or late, late afternoon, even if we can get up here. And maybe us meet Friday afternoon, then have everybody that you're talking about from the district office and stuff come in Saturday morning. And then have, and then we have some more time, maybe Saturday afternoon again, after we hear everything they say, have some more time just as a board to talk about.
Would that work for you, Lane?
Yeah.
You could, if I know when it is, I can.
Yeah, you had it Friday available in January.
Uh yes, I can remember.
Was it the date was? Fourteenth, and then the Monday was the seventeenth?
Yep. Yep.
Is it the fourth?
But I can make another Friday work.
As long as I know in advance, I can make it work.
I'd just like to have it before the eighteenth, whatever we decide, because that's when my calendar gets full again.
And just recognize that there's certain staff that we would have to compensate if it's Friday or Saturday.
Well, we'd have to if it was the evening, so.
Right, but if it was during the work week, I, I'm just letting you know.
Okay, so, yeah.
But will we have that kind of information by then? Like the, like the school calendar information and.
Can I just say, I, I think that stuff that we're gonna have to figure out in the next couple of months regardless for next year, this is more next three to five years, right? So we have that as part of the conversation. But this is a bigger picture so that me and Cindy can say, is what I'm doing on my desk tied with the board vision and goals and our strategic plan? Yes, okay, I'll continue. No, then this is not a priority. Because right now, we're kind of in silos and we're all have these great ideas, but we can't tie it to what the vision of what you guys want the district.
So we, you have to give you a vision. We need to give you a vision.
Okay.
So we have something to run on and not just thinking we have this great idea that it doesn't tie with Cindy's woman, what Jen is doing. Just to give us a little bit.
The, the vision is a dream of how we're gonna get there. The mission is, you know, kind of the, the path that we take. And so this is for a three to five year plan so that we're, because currently um it hasn't been that way. And we want to create that so that.
We'd kind of like to be a part of this strategic plan we have been in the past.
Right, and that's why actually the, this is the perfect time because we're building it right now and that's why we really want what you want your voice, you guys represent this whole community from the districts that you represent. And this is the time that we can really share where we are. And then build upon that to help support the decisions that we make in the.
So Lane, did you say that you had the fourteenth open?
I do.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we?
Something else work too.
The fourteenth and fifteenth.
Does that work?
We have a, we have a work session between now and then. Five to one, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. That's nowhere is.
Are you telling me January? Now, is that, is that okay? I mean, it works for me. I can't do it after the fourteenth, fifteenth.
So what do you, does that, that work for you?
I think it can work for me, yeah.
Okay, so I think if we plan on the fourteenth, the half a day on the, on Friday and or the Saturday and we're thinking maybe the, see if we could get the um First National Bank room there.
And what, did you say the hours would be? Friday, Friday is two?
Thank, um, what, okay, does that work better for you?
Yeah, I have that, so we can.
Okay.
Work around any.
What was your thought and when you mentioned that?
Any other time, I was, I knew Lane was probably the main one that would try to work around the schedule wise, so I mean, we can start earlier if he's.
I was gonna say, yeah. Um, yeah, twelve or one, if we started earlier, maybe it could make, give you a little more productive.
Starting now, what time one would be?
Let's, would one work? Let's just go one on Friday.
To five.
Till five, if that works for everybody.
Works.
And then possibly the next day, I would just say start early and you know, eight or nine and go most of the day.
And uh you guys had pre-said that you wanted to also see a presentation of board docs.
Right, yep. And I, I, and after I was saying First National Bank, does that work for you guys? Or would you rather do it here in case you needed to go to your office and? No, First National Bank?
Better to get out of here.
Yep, okay, get out of here and clear, clear brain. Okay, okay.
That, that was called a retreat.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, Deborah. Okay, um E B C E school closings and cancellations. We're running short on time, so I don't know if we want to.
Why, why is it there? I thought we already.
Um clarification on who she is supposed to um notify.
If there's a cancellation, because the E B C, wait, E B C E states ha- hazard weather. It's everything, so.
Yeah.
Um, so that was what we wanted to clarify on is.
I think the board is the main person, people, we need to get a hold of.
Right, but so I make my snow decision tomorrow morning at four thirty. So do you want me to call you all at four thirty in the morning? Like, I mean, that's just the question, like, because and, and there are times that we're in, like, if, if there's that some of the reasons why we've had, you know, like when we closed temper down, for example, that's a quick one, like, I can have Deb call you. But there are times like, I don't, if there's a evident threat, like, do you?
You would probably call the police first.
Yeah, that would be the first one.
Right, and I'm focused.
And then they take over.
I just want to say that during these, you know, like, we're having a weather, we're in the, the southwest has a severe weather storm for tomorrow. What's projected for Cortez is not quite what the, the weather storm is, but like, let's say last Friday, we were up, you know, and we're up early and we're, can't, there's a possibility we can delay start.
Usually you could tell the night before that it might be a.
Well, impossibility.
We know, I mean, we start talking, but we assess the roads. Like, I don't, I'm not gonna close a school on a, on, let's say, Tuesday night when I haven't seen the roads at three thirty in the morning.
How do you contact parents?
What do you mean? Oh yeah, totally. No, we, we, I, we contact Mark, we have our, our whole phone tree system, so it all goes out. I mean, you guys are on that list too. Um but, you know, we, we have a phone tree for how we contact parents and, and.
And you're talking about weather right now, is that?
I'm, I'm just talking about, this, this policy is about school closures. That's what I'm talking about. It's, it's not about one specific.
Okay, well, if it's weather, you follow protocol. You call, you talk to the bus barn. You talk to the people who live in the different areas and you make the call and then we get it on the phone tree. Now, if it's a school shooting, you call the police.
Well, no, no, I, I know.
And then, well, no, and then, and then Deb or somebody will call the board. If you, if it's going to be because you don't have enough staff members like you did
Couple of months ago.
Yeah, you call the board.
Right.
So I guess it's taken care of, right? Is there?
Well, originally, originally.
It says authorizing agency, she needs to know, do we need to put in uh board presidents?
That request came from the board. The board asked us to revise this policy.
Yeah.
And don't know what wording you want.
I would say the board, authorizing agent would be the board.
Authorizing, because authorizing means that I'm not making a decision.
You're making a recommendation.
You're making a recommendation.
So that's the question is, in, in, in what area am I making?
You're reading too much into it.
I think this came about because, the reason this policy came back is because I, I feel the consensus is, maybe you took the authority, I think maybe it's just abused just a little bit. And I think that's why we're coming back to it.
When you closed schools down for two weeks.
And, and it's just one thing, well, now we need to look at this because that's not the way we feel it should have happened. So who do we need to put in there? Um because the authorizing agency to shut down the school was who? And, you know, who was it? And.
Yeah, it's totally different scenarios.
Yeah.
Weather is one scenario that.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're.
Somebody has to be out there to make that call.
So I think if you're, you guys just need to make a wording.
Okay.
And then we can submit this to you for first read.
Okay, okay. We'll get, we'll get the wording back to you.
If I don't know. You can just get it back to me.
Okay.
And, and we do our, our meetings.
Okay.
What's it decided before?
Okay.
Because I remember.
There was one in seventeen, I, I, we need to look back. Do you have a copy of the old, yeah, the old policy back in twenty seventeen or something like that?
I looked it up and I found some notes in the meeting notes, but the policy wasn't changed. Was what it looked like to me, if I read it right. It's like, it's like the meeting notes say that there was a change to the policy, but that I never saw that the policy got changed.
Okay.
This policy, that was revised in twenty twenty and it specifically says just emergency.
Well, and before that, it says eighteen, so.
Yeah, it was adopted in eighteen, but.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, our only concern is that if you're going to close down the school for a week, you need to let us have a part of that decision and, and an explanation of why. That I, but yeah, we'll work on the wording.
And then I can bring it back personally.
Okay, so we'll be done. Keep moving on, even though it's seven o'clock. Okay, okay, communication. Um, I don't know if that was. So I don't know if that's on there. To, um. Did you have?
I don't know who added it, but I think Ed and I had talked about a lot of really good ideas on communication um and as far as engaging the public, so.
Absolutely. Okay.
Um I think as a board, we need to do a lot more because I think it's, uh, it's very reactive if we're finding out a lot of things or discussing with things, people, things uh later when they should be discussed. It'd be um far more, uh, yeah, more appropriately. So I know Ed had mentioned things like, uh, you know, we, we heard a lot of good things at that regional conference or.
That's Caspian.
Yeah, the, the regional one. And so we, um, you know, one, one thing that Ed was talking about was, well, I, I'll let you share it.
And then these are all things we can do at the board retreat too.
Yeah, so, okay, so.
So long as the table till the board retreat.
Why don't we just talk?
Okay.
When we can get more in depth.
Okay.
So.
Okay, and then F superintendent's evaluation. So you should have one in your board packet. Um we did have a couple more that we um found that we kind of um thought were a little more user friendly, that we liked a little bit better, that I don't know if we need to just get this out to um you, Resha or Deb, and then you can forward it to everybody in, um, because I don't know, no, I think I've used the old one. You've used the old, Stacey's used the old one, but I don't think anybody else has. If you use the old evaluation, so, so you probably wouldn't have as much.
It, it's a pain, it is a pain.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so this one's just.
One thing too, I can bet it with attorneys. Well, I can bet your exemplars.
Okay.
Attorneys as well to make sure that they're, they, they, they match.
Okay, or.
Cross one thing out.
Yeah, what, we just have to cross out one word and put in our district.
Right.
Basically what it is.
Yeah, so just, if you want to send that to either myself or Ms. Ramsey.
Okay.
We'll, we'll send it out to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because that would be due in January.
January.
So you guys will probably just put that electronic then, so that you.
Yes, yeah, yep, and that's.
Also, the board evaluations in the packet that we received from them, and that one stays the same. We still need to go out to board. And we will do the board in public.
Okay.
Superintendent, executive.
Okay, um, any more questions on any of that? Okay. Uh, item G, salary study plan. So that's um comprehensive plan to equalize steps from two thousand eight to two thousand and ten. Um three years were froze and we have returned two, so we're talking about giving back that one step. So do you have anything to?
It's less than fifteen people that are still here.
Yeah.
So I can, I'll get that together, present it next month and then we can go from there. Really, I mean, it, do you guys have an idea?
What's that one?
When it would be returned. And I say that because if we're, ultimate goal is to go to a four day and change salary schedules, the step's not gonna be the same as it would be right now, right? Because contract days are gonna change, things are gonna move around if we're going for a four day.
What's gonna be easiest for you?
I would say let's, let me bring it to you next month and we'll discuss how you guys want to implement giving it back to them.
Okay.
Once it's identified, does that sound like?
Yeah.
The work.
Yeah, yeah, that'll work, yep. Okay. Any other questions, comments for the work session? Yeah, we'll adjourn the work session at seven oh seven and we will move into our regular session agenda. Okay. Um, okay, so I will call this a regular session agenda, call the meeting to order at seven oh eight and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred dollars, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, go ahead, a motion to set the agenda?
Don't move.
Moved by Sherry Wright, secondly, Cody Wells, any discussion?
Um, I need to point out that items for action item on twelve, action items, D, that paperwork actually got put in your packet under Kyle's report. So you have it, but it's just not where it's supposed to be. It's in Kyle's report if you're looking for.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Okay, thing done. Ramsey, if you could call for the question?
Rachel.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Heart.
Hi.
Noise.
Hi.
Rice.
Hi.
Wells.
Hi.
Right.
Hi. Okay, um student presentation, Pleasantview Elementary, The Falcon Singers. Do we have them here with us?
Actually, they, I'll let, excuse me, board, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Um, they presented last night, but there's a flu bug going around at their stomach, but so Mrs. Max sent an email this morning apologizing, but we have a lot of kids out and a lot of parents. She just sent me a airdrop of the video snippet that I was trying to get.
Oh.
Clicked out, but it, it might take a, a couple of minutes. Do you want?
We'll just.
Try and then let you know? Okay, if you don't mind, we'll write that back.
Okay. Okay, so let's move to um five, the approval of minutes for November sixteenth, executive session and regular session, November thirtieth, special board meeting. Go ahead, a motion.
I make a motion to approve all of those minutes.
Second.
Move by Stacy Hall, seconded by Sherry Wright, any discussion, corrections? Okay, seeing none, um, you call for the question?
Fraser.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Hart.
Hi.
Noise.
Hi.
Rice.
Hi.
Wells.
Hi.
Wright.
Hi. Okay, celebration reports.
I forgot some, but I forgot what they, the, uh, the high school paper, um, girls softball, have we mentioned school softball team made?
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
I know they're having a choir, um, what's going on at the heist, is it tonight?
There's a basketball.
Basketball game, basketball begins to rain.
And there's a bed tonight at the high school as well.
I need a celebration report. Stacy Hall is the new regional representative for Casby on the board of directors.
For Chassa.
What did I say, Casby? She is our new region.
Okay.
And, and Sherry, what about you?
What about me?
Bosie's, no, that.
Oh, oh. Yes, I have been on the Bosie's board for the last six years, apparently this year, um, I have been made the president of that Bosie's board. So, um, so yeah, so, and, and honestly, Bosie's, there's, there's not a lot, I mean, they just, Adri is, is amazing over there. And so there's not a whole lot that you report back or hear on or something, I mean, that hasn't been taken care of at that level. I mean, they just take care of things, so, um, but she's, she's amazing to, to, um, work with and, and the rest of her team as well. And, but they do have, they now have eighty employees, they are, they are too, looking for a position here and there. Um, each, each meeting, we have people leaving and people coming, so, um, but the, the majority people have stayed longevity. There have been so few on there that over twenty years, so we appreciate that. So, so any questions regarding the Bosie's, you can get ahold of me if you need to.
And might I add to, um, the Laura Foundation in, in, um, working with as well, uh, Ms. Hopp, uh, they're, they've been sending out blankets to all of our staff and celebrating all of our staff, and it, it's been very thoughtful. And, you know, we've, we've met with each department, I think there's one department left that has not been met with, but it's been a tremendous push from, from those to just to, to, you know, send a little bit of cheer to, to our teachers' way, so.
That, that was fun to do the other day.
Yeah.
Ones, there was lots of emotion, um, those people were very appreciative of, of those blankets and just the recognition that, that they got.
The mayor was there.
The bad part of that was we went to the high school though. I would have been out of there three years and I didn't know anybody at that high school.
Okay, yeah, and I really wanted to make it to Lewis and Pleasant View, but couldn't make that work, so.
And I have one other one, we need to congratulate Avery on, uh, being able to play in the, uh,
Oh, yeah.
All-state volleyball game. Yeah, yeah, was, that's quite an honor there, so, a great honor, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep it going.
Anything else?
There's always something, but it doesn't come to your, unless you write it down. So, but, um, okay, Ms. Hopp, are you ready?
I'm just waiting for Jamie just to make sure.
Okay.
Should be ready, but the airdrop is getting all over. So, um, again, Pleasant View students are going to come tonight, but we have thirty kids in the school and it starts running through families, the, the stomach bug hit, hit them this week. Lewis said it a couple of weeks ago, so they did a presentation for the community last night. Mrs. Mack just sent me a snippet and edited just so the board could see it since the kids couldn't come. This is all parent volunteers putting this together, lots of hours, lots of love. Um, and our school resource officer, Officer Kane, comes in and volunteers his time to teach the students music. Um, he has a passion for music, so he was teaching them how to do the drums and some other musical instruments for this, so. Thank you for listening and giving me a minute to get that set up.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you, I thought that you would enjoy this. And if I can just say, one other thing to the board, Thursday, um, this week, well, this is doing the Christmas around the world, which is a tradition, and as a new principal, I am diving into that, Ms. Ramsey, I'm not sure they were doing it with you or our PTO.
We did old-fashioned Christmas, which was the predecessor.
Yeah, and so I'd like to invite any board members on, it starts today, it'll go through, um, eleven o'clock, eleven thirty when we do lunch. Um, and it is, uh, classroom moms, again, this is all parent volunteer based, the classroom moms, so they pick a country and they talk about how they celebrate holidays there and have food and kids kind of rotate through and learn about the different countries. And Pleasant, Pleasant View students get bus in about eight, ten, um, and then Pleasant View has their own country in the auditorium, so we bring them to, uh, to participate in that. So if anybody's available, they'd like to throw in.
Lots of time, I highly encourage it.
Roughly eight to eleven, yeah.
And please, if you choose to go, just inform us, because if there's more than half of us, then we need to book for a forum. So just let us know so that we can adequately.
I, I think that you should just post it.
Okay.
So that if somebody can make it, they don't know for sure.
We'll do that.
Keep it posted.
Okay, thanks, and I just wanted to, I knew Miss Noise would know about that, so I just.
Oh, yeah, the little passports and how it's so darn fun.
Thank you, Board, for taking your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, um, okay, superintendent's report.
And so I know that you don't want me to read it, so do you have any questions on it? Um, it's, it's a little shorter because it was like a three-week period of time, the next one will be a little shorter because it's only going to be a couple of weeks of, of classes, while I do want to say that, um, you know, we, we have had some challenges the last week-ish with, uh, this, this bug, the stomach flu, has really knocked out about half of our kids and our staff. Um, and then we did have a little bit of an uptake in quarantines and in folks who are, um, kids and adults who either have COVID or are being quarantined, so that was kind of, um, the end of last week and, and this week as well. So, uh, I do know that we have had some concerns about, uh, the workforce at Menah, and I can honestly say that, uh, Ms., Ms., um, Eldridge and I, we walked through Menah today. Uh, we kind of just popped in, we made a, uh, we evaluated every classroom. Went into every classroom, we, we moved around, we looked at the kids, and I can tell you, most of the classrooms had less than ten kids in them, and they were very safe. And I think the largest population was a fifth grade class with about eighteen kids, which is still pretty low. Um, and so I just wanted to let you know, if you're hearing things, uh, graduated half, about a hundred and twenty kids were out today due to the bug.
In Menah?
At Menah.
Okay.
Due to the bug and due to being quarantined. And so I just want you to be aware that I know I've informed you, but, um, I know I sent you texts and such, but, uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
And the students that are quarantined, they're quarantined because parents have chosen.
True.
Okay.
Right.
Just wanted to make that.
Right.
Question I had on your challenges here, it says consistently, meeting with our attorney to address OCR compliance with Bosie's, what is that about?
Uh, the OCR complaint is about, um, Office of Civil Rights. Oh, no. Uh, but, uh, we had a complaint in regards to compliance with modified scheduling of students that have, um, individual education plans, and so if you have an individual education plan, which is per the Individual Disability Education Act, um, you have to account for why you're modifying a schedule and you have to defend it. And so we had, due to our COVID year last year, we had, uh, more than a handful of kids that went to a modified schedule, and so we, I was, um, brought, this was brought to my attention pretty much July third-ish, and we're still working to become in compliance. We've worked with the, with, so now I have a different attorney that focuses, um, specifically on special education law, so I've been working with the individual principals, each one of these individual cases, to make sure that we were in compliance with the law. And, and OCR, the Office of Civil, um, Rights, they're, uh, we're working with a gentleman there, and so he's kind of sent us a bullet list that we have to adhere to in order to get back into compliance. They're really willing to work with you if you demonstrate that you're paying attention. The second you don't pay attention and the second you ignore, then they will come after you, so to speak, and I don't mean come after in a negative way, but I just mean that, um, you need to just address it quickly, so that's what we're doing.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, um, staff reports. Liz, well, that's, um, she heard the superintendent's report, Liz is not here, but she does have your, her information in the. So if you have any questions on that, I'm sure you can reach out to her in regards to any of this.
And you could always look through Deborah too, if you would like her to do that for you.
I, I have a question, I think you can answer it. Um, when we have major incidents report, how many are repeat offenders?
Uh, well, that's a tricky question, so when you're talking about major incidents reports, are you talking about aggression?
I'm talking about the one that, uh, that is put in here. It, it has possession of drugs, bullying, fighting, physical aggression, disruption, defiance.
I, I can say it depends on the kid, because if, if you see our discipline hearing, some kids have a history that, um, you know, we have some kids that have been demonstrating these kind of behaviors, let's say, and, and I'm sorry if I'm not answering correctly, but a lot of these kids are demonstrating behaviors when they're five.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, in this report, are there repeat offenders in that?
Yes.
Or in, that, just in this report?
Yeah.
I mean, for instance, on March sixth, uh, no, November sixteenth was a offender, and then, oh my gosh, here, down here in the nineteenth, there is the same person.
Right, and I can't say, um, I'll have to double check that exactly, because I've, I'm the one who, um, when we do the discipline hearings, I'm the one who works on it, but we have several kids that are repeat offenders.
Because my concern is, and it's discipline.
Right.
And what are we doing about it? Right, Cindy has a question, we can provide that information to you. Okay, I, I, I didn't really read it tonight, but just, maybe at our retreat, we can discuss it.
Well, we have that information, it's, it's very readily available. It's well documented.
Right, I assume.
But generally speaking, I can tell you the high flyers are the high flyers. And when you get to the suspensions, expulsions and kids, we had a kid who was taken to Grand Junction to go to the juvie jail from one of our schools. And that kid is probably, um,
Three, three.
At least three of these, and then I won't even mention the sibling.
So, anyway, I mean, my concern is the safety of other students and the safety of our staff.
Right.
And do we as a board need to do something and give safety?
Right, right, we'll hit that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You have, um, Kemper from Ms. Nelson. Executive Director of Finance.
Senior Board Superintendent, uh, you have my board report, it was pretty short, it was four items, it was the audit, the mill levy, which are both action items later on, and then I gave an update on the, the final budget, which I'll present at the work session, and then we'll have this as an action item in January. And then S R three as well, we're just finishing narrative, so we're building that budget together. Um, our plan is to have that submitted February timeframe. But one thing that I wanted to mention tonight was, that's not on my report, is we have been discussing Lakeview, and I know a couple of months ago we said we get it, the, the quick claim, quick claim deeds here.
Right.
To get approved on this board meeting. Um, we put them together, we got them to our attorneys, there's a couple of items that they want to make sure is correct, so that we don't do this and have to come back and do it again. So I contacted one of the two parties, I let them know what's going on, and so that'll be next month that this will be presented to you to finalize that. I just wanted to give you that.
Turned a lot of work, didn't it?
And, and might I add is, I talked to one of the owners yesterday, Saturday, I believe. Um, and I talked to our attorney, I sent the paperwork into our attorney last Thursday. They returned it and said I needed to go to the recorder's office to get a vested deed. So I went to the recorder's office to get a vested deed, but since it's a nineteen, twenty-ish property, um, they, the, the recorder's office didn't really have the appropriate documentation, and so they, they pretty much sent me back to my attorney, and I resubmitted the information to the attorney, I believe, yesterday morning, I want to say. But now that our attorney's going to work on finishing the documentation, but what we want you to know is we are moving forward. And it, it did stop for a second, but it's, it's, it's a little, it's a little different when you're giving back property. Um, it's slightly complicated, especially when it's.
Yeah, that would be easy.
Well, yeah, when the directions are ten steps to the west and five steps to the east. That's a little harder.
Deed was, was created in eighteen ninety.
That was an awesome document to read. Yeah, it was.
And we have cleared that building out, correct?
Right, it's cleared out, um, and, and it's not like clean, but.
Right, but it's got all of our property.
One of the owners is about to just demolish it anyway.
So.
Our stuff is completely out, Conex has gone everything.
Um, did you? I, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, mill levy, and I understand that the state government's making us do a lot of things, but, um, when you say bond redemption fund is two point nine seven four mils, does that go into our original? our original mill, which is what, 17, something 18?
Right, so the top part, it'd be that, is like 18, 18 or 15 or something. And then there'll be an abatement that gets included in that, and that's our regular mill levies. The bond that we went out in 2013, that's, that's that 2.004.
2.9, 2.974.
Right. And it's wrong in my report. So it's right on that resolution, but it's right on the report. But essentially, that's what we have to have the county verify is our mills to pay our bond payment from here.
Okay, so does that add into our 17?
Yes, all adds. And so ultimately.
So ultimately, we have 20 mils that we're collecting. And when the bond is.
And then you have the bond.
But the bond, but the bond redemption mills are not.
I knew that.
Okay.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Executive Director of Student Services. Okay, so you have his report there. All right. Executive Director of Human Resources, Kimpya Eldridge.
We need for I presented you with my board report. It did come in a little late. I apologize for that. However, it does include a monthly update for our current insurance usage. Before I start on that specifically, is there any other questions that you have in relation to the information that I started with the updates? After receiving your audit report, the auditor today and her concerns regarding our self-insured insurance, I wanted to reiterate the reasons why I have been providing this information to the board on a monthly basis. I'm trying to keep you abreast of the costs, some savings with the prescription drug changes that we made this year, but also for the stock loss, the aggregate, and then the current charges. And I would be happy to spend some time with you. I could do that tonight, or I could do it at our board retreat and explain what all of that means and how it works. And also provide you with some recommendations on what I feel that we should do moving forward and attempt to save a substantial amount of money and still provide wonderful benefits for our employees.
I would appreciate that.
If you would mind flipping through some of the attachments for the insurance. Ask questions, and I can also provide some feedback on what this means. Requested, as I've explained to you before, as a self-insured program, we can obtain these utilization reports. Now, if you were, if you go onto a pool or we weren't self-insured, it's not as easy to obtain usage reports. Okay, so being self-insured, although it doesn't have names and agents of who these people are, we do have more access to the utilization as being self-insured. First page is, is pretty generic. It shows the month. You know, we, these are totals for July, August, September, October, and then November. Next month, they'll have December's charges. How many people are under the census, whether it's single occupants, family, or the total members? So you can see for November 2021, we had a total of 394 members on our plan. There was a refund this last month, which is, you can tell, the first one that we've seen so far. That means that we overpaid claims. So we did receive the refund on that. Medical claims paid, RX claims paid, our stock loss premiums, admin fees, total plan costs for this month. This is what we paid, $213,853 for this month. That averages cost per employee and then cost per member. So that's the average cost that we're paying for just this month for each person that's enrolled in the insurance. You can see where that fluctuates from the beginning of the year through this month due to the amount of claims filed in that month. So it is a fluctuation, but down on the bottom, you can see the average cost. So the average cost for our cost per employee per month would be $968 average to date. And then cost per member, an additional 744. Okay? So if you move on to the next page, insult me at any point if you have any questions or like me to explain this in further detail. The next, the next sheet shows 12-month rolling claims. So the previous page just listed this plan year. This one is the 12-month rolling. So you can see a better accumulative average of what the claims are, how much is paid for a specific amount. And then look at total members. I mean, I find that very concerning, especially when we go farther down and it looks back for previous years where we have a substantially larger amount of members enrolled in the plan and how much higher our costs are now with less members. But this gives you a better rolling average. You know, we're good at providing charts. So the third page shows you a bar chart and a more visual on what the cost is for those that are visual. So let's see, next page.
Why are some of them red?
Where are we at? Which page are you at?
Page three.
Okay, page three. That's a negative. RX claims would mean that we got a kickback from.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Return. And then the next one is the history through October 2021. So it'll show you 2011, 12, 12, 13, 13, 14, all the way up to 21, 22. And as you can see, the total member numbers, as I just mentioned, if you can look at the medical census under total members in 2011, 12, there was 372 versus 301 for this year, the average. Medical claim totals, see the difference? And then the total stock loss premium difference as well. Census, bar chart. People are enrolled in our insurance without the years. Total cost per year throughout the years.
It's kind of depressing there.
Yeah.
Well, you know, inflation, everything costs more in the insurance and in the medical place. You could plan approximately 10% per year. But I have some ideas that I would like to present during our retreat that I really think I'm confident that we could save some money, so.
Love that.
medical claims.
I really like 15, 16. I'm just saying.
Okay, so if you go down to page 10, is where it's employee benefit management services. So it's going to list our high claims. Now, what that, what that means is, since we're self-insured, there's a stock loss means that we have a cutoff, that the district will pay all claims up to a certain point. And ours, our stock loss is 45,000, which is quite low, actually. So any claims that reach or go above 45,000, that's when the insurance company kicks in and starts paying. So these are our high claims that are listed where it's gone over our stock loss and the insurance company is actually starting to pay. But until we reach that stock loss, the district pays 100%, okay? So you can see there's several that have reached the stock loss. On page 10 and 11.
Is that 45?
45,000.
Per employee?
Per member.
Per member.
It's not just the employee, it's just spouse.
Insurance, yeah.
Yes. It is quite low, actually. In, in my previous positions as benefits administrator, executive director of human resources, we've never set a stock loss below 75,000. Once you start lowering your stock loss, your administration fees increase. And so that's where you're paying the difference. You may have years where you have several kids that's 75,000, and it can bring it up. But if you figure $200,000 plus for administration fees on a monthly basis, you want to try to bring those down as well. So there's, there's give and take in all of this, and you really need to understand how self-insured plans work in order to make those changes. And I, I do plan to provide more information when we, when we meet. So you'll have a better knowledge of, of moving forward and to make the decision on what kind of changes you want to make, if you want to make.
Sounds like we need to.
Okay, on page 12, I'm going through this for the benefit of our new board members. I provide this on a monthly basis, so you need to keep track of it. But I wanted you to learn what this, what all of this means and how it works. So page 12, this shows how many people had claims for what specific areas, like allergy care, alternative medicine, ambulance, anesthesia, auditory. Under no circumstances is it going ever to, going to tell you who it was. That's a total HIPAA confidential area. But it will tell how many people had services for those specific issues. And then what the total charges are. And you know, when you get an explanation of benefits or an EOB, when you file an insurance claim and it'll say how much is allowed and what they'll pay. Well, this disallowed is what insurance company says we're not paying. So that either falls back onto the member or it falls back and has to be reduced from the service provider. And then what is allowed? What is the deductible that's paid or the copay? And then what, what amount was paid for those specific services? So you can see there was a substantial amount so far this year for all of these, all of these different services. Then you can move on to page 13. Better explanation. Raise it down by percentages. I mean, it's, it's interesting if you're into reading how it's all broken down. Gives you a much better idea of the charges that was discussed during the audit. Then if you move on to page 14, it's going to provide you all of the providers that were utilized for our members. And you can see Southwest Health Systems was at the very top of the list. It also shows the city. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that our member flew to Philadelphia to have a care. What that may mean is they did either telehealth or they had a referral. Sometimes, you know, you'll have lab work sent off to someone else for it to breathe, and they could be in a different city. But it also could include a trip to Dallas, Texas. Well, that was anesthesia. So let's say, I don't know, Kansas City, Kansas City. Let's say that we have possibly a dependent who's in college, a bonus college in Kansas City, and they go to the doctor there. They would be covered. They have someone on vacation and they got sick and they go to the doctor there. That's why, where, you know, why it could be listed. That provides you all of the service providers that have billed our insurance. And then finally, on page 15, 16, and 17, it's broken down by years. Paid according to different adjustments, different codes. It's just broke down in more detail from the last three pages. You all have copies of this report, so you can study it closer. Be prepared to ask more specific questions next month when I bring the December's report to you. And do you have any questions for today about this part? So we can move on to the next section, which is the new paid health. That is the prescription drug program that we entered into an agreement with. Specifically, what they do is they identify high prescription drug costs for our members. Some members have prescription drugs that can exceed up to $10,000 a month. And so what paid health does is they negotiate those costs with the pharmacy or the, not the pharmacy, but the, who makes the drug, and then negotiates a lower price. And so with, with this new program, we've started saving. And you can see on page two, for this last month, we saved $29,160. And so far, after the plan year, we saved over $140,000 just by participating in this program, which I identified right after we started, I think back in August, when we, we signed up to do this. So that right there was a good program, you know, to, if you can identify that you're spending an excruciating amount of money on your claims for prescription drugs, there's all those ways that you can try to negotiate that. It was and still is a little difficult for some of our employees who have this plan because they have to, they have to work with paid health. It's not just easy, you know, slide your card. You have to, you have to manage it through this third, third party. And so I've had to assist several of our employees with how to navigate to do this so we can take advantage of these deductions. But, you know, as people learn and understand and communicate this to everyone, then they, they know that their insurance card isn't just being denied, that there's a reason behind it. And the more communication, the better.
Is this costing them less in copay insurance for prescriptions?
All the way around. Yes, most definitely. Especially when they, when they're able to pay a 90-day program bill. Yeah. Yeah. And that first page just kind of shows average costs and how much the members pay and how much we've saved by participating in it.
Considering when we signed up for this, we were anticipating maybe saving $140,000 on the year.
So a year.
And we're halfway through.
Yeah. So it's good. You know, Kyle and I have both discussed and identified the high claims and the high costs for being self-insured. We, we've met several times and talked about what we could potentially do moving forward. It was just very difficult, you know, starting right when the plan year started to be able to change it. So, you know, we'll start reviewing things after the first of the year. So when we're able to make changes, we can do it for the next year. And then, you know, definitely make recommendations and possibly make new brokers and people that I've worked with before that have definitely shown huge savings for companies. And I, I hope to be able to entertain the board with some of those individuals who can explain it better and then show the potential savings overall, like from year to year to year. So we won't have to be transferring money from the J R Fund.
I would welcome that.
I would welcome that. Thank you.
Hopefully, you know, hopefully we can, we can make big changes for this next year as far as, as providing better benefits. I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, you know, pull back on our benefits. There's just different ways to manage it and, you know, you might give and take. If you go back and review those reports, you can see there's a substantial amount of costs charged at the ER. Now, I know that in years past that, you know, it's a matter of educating our, our members that you don't want to go to the ER because it's going to cost you three times. You know, if you can call in and do telehealth or if you can go to a walking clinic. And some of the ways to do that is to put a deductible just on ER visits to, you know, discourage individuals to take in their baby in the middle of the night with a hundred and two degree fever and instead call up the telehealth and try to get, manage, you know, do I really need to go in? And they said if you're, if you can't breathe or you're breathing, or if you're bleeding or you can't breathe, go to the ER. Otherwise, you know, you could manage it with other, other ways. And so if we could just educate our members to do that, we could substantially bring down that cost. And to do that, you just, you know, raise the deductible just for specific ER visits. So there's a lot of different things that you can do to address that. So I've also listed, you know, we're still advertising, still recruiting, built positions. Fortunately, we're still getting resignations. It's very discouraging. It's heartbreaking to me when I receive a resignation. I reach out, is there anything I could do to change your mind? You know, try to really make our employees feel like they're valued and wanted here. But it's, it's tough. It's really tough. I did totally attach two survey monkeys that I received this last month. You know, I sent them to everyone again and I did get two and they're saying basically the same thing. They can't afford to keep their family on the salary that they make here, so. You're welcome to review those. And if you, if you have any questions in regards to survey monkeys or the survey, what I do is individuals who have retired or leave the district, they'll send them an exit survey and those that respond, I'll provide that in the board report. So if you have an explanation to go back to previous months, I'd be happy to provide that to you as well. On a positive note, last month I shared the new community partnership that we have entered into with the Department of Workforce Services, providing positions for individuals who've been displaced due to COVID and currently unemployed. We've actually, they've actually hired six. This says five, but I found out there's another one today. We place these COVID nineteen, they're called custodian janitors in separate buildings. And then once they have their work done, they can also work helping as a para or in the schools. The one individual that we have here in admin, she's actually a retired accountant. And so we're going to take advantage of her and when she's not cleaning, we're going to have her help doing some stuff in the office. But we have two in the law and that's fantastic because we could not fill the custodian, COVID custodian form in our before and now we've got two helping there. We have one in each one of the elementary schools. Katie, you have one in yours. And every, I mean, we're starting to fill the positions and I had requested three at the high school, three at the middle school, at least one in each elementary school. But now has two transportation starts this week. They'll come in every morning and completely disinfect all of the buses, providing our drivers more time to do other things like clean it or, you know, they'll sweep and mop. But then the COVID custodians will come in and disinfect and wipe everything down. And then they'll also have time to be able to help in the shop and also the warehouse. So it's pretty exciting, you know, that's a great program because they work for the Department of Workforce Services. They pay their wages. It's not costing the district any money whatsoever. And we're employing wonderful people, so. That's awesome. And their wages are much higher because we're not paying benefits and all of that. So it's working out really good.
That's good.
Any questions? Anything else? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's not over insurance.
Okay.
Over why they left the school district. And the last line that says, I had inquired about a part-time position at the same school, but was told in-house transfers were not allowed, so I had to find something else. Could that person have not worked as a para?
That person wanted to work two jobs and we paid overtime.
Oh, okay.
And we did, we did allow that and we have allowed that for some of our bus drivers to come in and work as paras to fill their emergent need. But these are in other situations.
Okay. I was just wondering because I was going for desk.
Well, there are some individuals who have requested a, a transfer from one school to another. But in this situation, in this time right now, we need to focus on our emergent need. And if we have someone trying to leave a school that we're already short headed, we're just not approving that.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have staff reports. We also have Southwest Open School Charter Presentation of Progress.
Casey's here.
There we go.
Hi there.
Oh, it's okay. My name's Casey Simpson. Thanks for having me here.
Yeah, it's just kind of.
I made you guys a presentation. Southwest Open School is doing our charter renewal right now. We haven't had a charter renewal in ten years. And I wasn't here ten years ago, ten years ago. I don't know how many of you guys were here ten years ago. Maybe one of you?
Two.
Two?
Oh, you weren't? I'm not on the board. I mean, I was here in this community, but I was not on the board.
Right. So it's been a long time. SWOZ has changed a lot in the past ten years. And I was going to share about that. So like I said, it's been ten years since the last charter contract. Thank you guys for reading that, by the way. I think we're discussing it at your next board meeting. In the last ten years, some things have changed. I documented, we do an intake interview and we documented why students come to SWOZ. And in the last three, in the last two years of documenting why students come to SWOZ, these are the five reasons. They're listed from most frequent to least frequent. And then there's others that are, they didn't make the cut because it was, you know, not the top five. The number one reason students come to SWOZ is they fear or are uncomfortable with bullying or fighting they've experienced in their previous school environment. Students come to SWOZ from Mankas, Dolores, Dove Creek, and Montesma Cortez, and sometimes out of state as well. The second reason, they're over age and under credited or have not experienced academic success at their previous current educational, previous or current educational setting. Typically, those students have failed one or more classes during the previous year of school and they're now at an age where they can't graduate by eighteen at their current school. So they've come to SWOZ and as an alternative education campus, students can go to school with us until they're twenty one. Three, basic project based learning. Four, their parents or family members went to SWOZ. Five, parents are dissatisfied with some other element of the previous educational setting. Currently, one point eight percent of students who currently attend SWOZ have been previously expelled. That's only two students on campus. I think that's been a change since in the past, we used to have a lot of, we used to have a lot of expelled students and we actually had a grant, the Expelled and Average Student Services Grant that helped focus on expelled students. We don't have many right now. Seventy-two percent of our students come to SWOZ as ninth graders who choose to attend SWOZ directly out of eighth grade. So most of our students right now are coming from your middle school. And our major area, just to throw it, throw it out there, twenty-two point eight percent of our students have an IEP. I think that was mentioned earlier in your board meeting. It's an individualized education plan. It's four times higher than the state average, which is roughly five percent. So that's like our major area of like focus right now. It is making sure that we follow those plans. And like Dr. Bandois said, the Office of Civil Rights, OCR, is definitely paying attention to how we do that. And their attention has definitely been more focused this year than in the past. So that's definitely a focus area for us. In the past ten years, we've got a new school-based health center. We have a new central office building. We have a new science building. We have a new bike mechanic shop. Our service class built a campus garden on the north side of campus. And we're looking at right now, if we can find a builder, to build a new modern science classroom on the north side of campus in the next year. So the old SWOZ trailers are slowly being fixed out. It just makes more sense to have stickered buildings that are currently attached to ground. This also came up early in your meeting. We have a strategic plan that we developed with our board, so you guys might be looking into that. That is a three to five year plan. It's really broad. It's really big. And it helps focus our energies in the years to come. What we have on our docket, we have three primary goals. These are based on our school performance framework in and out of the state, based on our UIP that we wrote. We want to build strong instructional frameworks. We want to create a learner centered experience and we want to be really supportive of overall student wellbeing, especially during these, these times when student anxiety and depression are alongside my. For our teacher, this is us painting on our, on our shed buildings. Our next broad strategic plan goal is to really focus on project based learning. Create innovative class projects, to focus on character and SCL. SCL is social emotional learning. And to make sure that ICAP, which is individual career and academic plans, are happening in all classes to make sure that our graduates are prepared to enter the workforce. That's some football. Lastly, the, the third component of our strategic plan is creating an inspiring learner centered experience. We want to make sure that we have individualized classroom support. That's tied to the fact we have over twenty-two percent IEP students at our school. We want to be data driven. We want to really focus on student engagement because we're seeing a lot of absences in our schools as well. And we want to make sure that our post-secondary workforce readiness and extracurricular activities are top of the line. The extracurricular activities are funded by twenty-one C, which you guys, I believe, also participated in. Those are awesome. This is what we offer at our school. We offer extracurricular activities every day of the week. These are some of the, well, bottom right, extracurricular, curricular activity. Now, we took a group of guys down to fish on the salmon river, blowing off a damn, something I enjoy doing and teaching others how to do. And then that was a raptor, a raptor specialist from, I believe, Dove Creek, Pleasant View, came and showed our schools a little bit about that. That's a snowshoe trip up at Lizard Head. You may recognize the area. What we do and what we believe in in our outdoor education, our expeditionary learning, is to make sure that students are having a good time while learning. A lot of the students that come to us, like I said, have not experienced academic success in the past. So the first step to doing that is engaging them when they come to us. We have added, we tripled the amount of parent teacher conferences we do every year, starting this year. We're now focused on doing more community events. We are currently working with a grant on social emotional learning to uplift that and make sure that that's happening in every class. We're really looking at our behavior management to share his point to ensure that everyone's safe in the classroom. We're surveying parents and students and staff. We've got two BHPs on campus in our school-based health center and we have a school counselor as well. So we have a lot of behavioral health support. And we're working to continue to uplift our partnership with the school-based health center to make sure that any student who needs, has all services to access those quickly and easily with a short walk across campus. Here's some examples of what we've been doing with the community. This is our vision and mission statement. If you guys want to. That was a ball backpacking trip in candy lips. Sorry if I was speaking quickly. I don't know how much time you guys have. It seems like you've got a lot to do. I didn't want to take up too much time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, I'm thinking, because what, you're thirty years into this, SWOZ?
Eighty-six, so thirty-five.
Eighty-six, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in my first year.
You're in your first year?
I'm thirty-seven.
I really like the way you've changed this and, and it's moving forward. I'm impressed, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we're doing a great job. We cut out students smoking across the street, so that's worked, you know.
And that's amazing.
Yeah, just kind of ignore our students into what society will expect of them so that when they get out, we practice the skills that are important in the workplace, whether they want to, you know, work in retail, you know, be in the trades or go on to school. We've got a few students right now I'm really proud of. Our college, University of Denver, master's degree. So students from SWOZ are doing amazing things and, you know, we're trying to cultivate that, cultivate that on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I don't know how to turn it off.
That's why we have to.
Okay. Any other staff reports? We, we got, we got yours in our packet. Other staff? I don't think so, no. Just thank you for letting us come into your school to present to you.
That was fun. I enjoyed it.
Yeah. Okay, more staff reports, board requests or reports?
We did the Caspi. I, I felt like it was a success. I went to several of them. I was talking to Ed. We're discussing, he and I went to a Mill Levy one. Trying to, I left all my, of course, I walked out and left everything sitting on my counter. But I, I, I learned a lot and that's, after eighteen years, I still am learning a lot. It always has something new and exciting. So does anybody want to share?
That's some good breakout sessions and, and some good general sessions too. I went to a couple of them on finance and then they went to one on policy. Yeah, they were some good breakout sessions and stuff.
You did finance too, didn't you?
I did.
Yes. Since you're treasure, I'm glad. But no, I, I learned a lot. I had other duties that I had to be at. But I, I had all breakout sessions I could. Like I said, it's, it's really, it's good to talk to other board members and know they all are facing the same issues that we are across.
Especially the rural schools.
They are dealing with COVID. They are dealing with everything that we're dealing with, lack of funding, the whole nine yards. And it's, sometimes you get good ideas from.
Board meetings blowing up. Take a lot more people coming to the. Take a lot more people coming to the board meetings.
Which we're thankful for.
Yes, very thankful.
Coming, yep. But I also have one and is Andy still here? You know, I'm concerned because I heard, I heard, okay, I'm prefacing this, that they don't have a secretary or anybody out there. So the teachers have to stop teaching to answer the phone or to let someone in the door.
At Pleasant View.
At Pleasant, at Pleasant, yes. Is that true? Why do we not have somebody there?
Because of the amount of kids there.
Doesn't matter. Those kids need to be educated, just like every other child. And if a teacher cannot keep the attention and stuff going if they're stopping to run to the door or to answer the phone. I would really, personally, I would really like to see a secretary out there. It's not fair to those kids, even if they're, even if there are only two. They, nor is it fair to the staff. So just saying.
I'd like to know how often it's happening. Is it like a huge problem or is it just like a one holiday or something?
Well, thirty kids and thirty parents call a day.
Is it thirty?
I don't know. I don't, I'm assuming because when you have kids in school, don't you call quite often?
No.
I did. I was a helicopter care.
Called me.
I don't know. I don't know what the average is. I don't know. But this is just what I'm hearing from staff saying. And, and I heard that staff want to leave because they can't, they're multi-casking too much. So I would like for you to consider that. It's not a bold decision. It's a critical decision.
Well, we've been talking about things like this.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. Anybody else got anything to report? All righty then, okay. Citizens, address the board.
Here comes the pass off.
Okay. Okay, Madeline Rooney.
Let's be clear. Critical race theory is being promoted here in one of the school districts through Whitman Wisdom Curriculum and social emotional learning. And I might add, the healthy kids survey. Administration is dangerously wavering in support of CRT and SCL. Why dangerous? Because it involves our kids. SCL has come to our educational system through an organization named CASL. CASL is long been known for teaching our students interpersonal emotional skills for success in life. But SCL has been hijacked by progressives. How do I know? By reviewing the SCL roadmap, which is about sixty-five pages of the superintendent's roadmap. And when you start, when you're starting places diversity, equity and inclusion, you're essentially bringing back racism, segregation and inequality. I would argue that the medicine is worse than the disease. SCL is operating as a cover for CRT and liberal sexual ethics. CASL is now brazenly trumpeting an even more troubling aspect of SCL. The opportunity to turn impressionable students into leftist activists through stereotyping. There are facts about CASL. Fact, CASL has recently revised its definition and framework for SCL to emphasize student identities, marginalization, equity, just communities in the collective rather than the individual. Fact, among CASL's funding partners is the Novo Foundation, whose main focus is abortion rights, LGBTQ interests and left-wing economics. With regard to, well, another fact about CASL is in their own words, they have declared that SCL must actively contribute to anti-racism. That's in their own words. With regards to sexual ethics, world politics has no, no right to push an ideology through our educational system based on a stereotype. Because stereotypes are often very repressive associated with your sex. So why do you think the people in academies and the thought leaders are not wanting to solve this problem of our educational system? While the profit outweighs the hard work to change at the expense of our children. CRT, in their own words, seeks to challenge the very foundation of the liberal order, which includes equality, fraternity and merit. CRT challenges the very assumptions of merit and hard work. CRT accuses these traditionally good American values as racist.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, Tammy Kulan.
I am presenting 500 signatures of opinion from our community to dissolve Whitman Wisdom Curriculum K through 12. It is funded by the Bill Gates Foundation and pushed out through the United Nations. We have all seen the tide to SCL. However, SCL is also a curriculum in itself, which drives and is infiltrated with CRT ideology. On September ninth, in the second DAC meeting, Mr. Parr handed out the CDE-approved programs list and Whitman Wisdom was not on the list. In October, Mr. Parr said a list of supplemental materials was being encouraged, but not all teachers were using them. Now, Mr. Parr has ordered new instructions and should be posting on the website. Why didn't this go through our already established DAC that we had? Why weren't they being used? And now you're forming another new DAC group. Just curious about that. In the superintendent's SCL toolkit, which you've all received a copy of it on page fifteen, section four, it states, "Co-created a list of stakeholder groups and individuals to engage as you build initial support, brainstorm possible dissent voices, strategies to identify and address their concerns, basically redirecting the ones that are clashing with this decision." According to CASL, it is basically a toolkit for indoctrinating children with radical ideology, left wing, that this infected every public school and many of our private schools in recent years. It is, the SCL toolkit is also being funded by the RW Johnson Foundation, Chan Zuckerberg Initiative and Advice Fund of Sil, and Advice Fund of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. Doesn't this tell us something? There are a couple of NGOs that are stacking the deck to reform America and make lots of money doing it. The district rolled out a new language arts curriculum in twenty-one for the grades six through twelve. The notification ended up buried in the legal notices of the local paper. The process was that only one copy was available for review during business hours at the administration building and cannot be taken off the premises. There is a growing sense that the public education is serving the outlook of the socialist collective teachers union, just like all of the grants that are coming in on a volunteer basis, pushing the sustainable development agenda. The human brain is not fully developed until twenty-four or twenty-five years of age. Until then, it is highly malleable. And as a result, gender-related study, at least as we know it today, should not be taught in K three twelve. And you all have a copy. I don't know. Can you just give it to me? Because I need a copy. Well, there's a copy for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy. Lynette Ward.
All Colorado school districts are required to adopt a local standard, standards that meet or exceed Colorado state standards. Colorado has an academic core standard in ten areas of preschool through not the twelfth grade. CMS testing in ELA, ELA and mathematics is done every year through students six through eight grade. Whitman Wisdom fails again for those standards. I found it unacceptable last month when Lisa Lichen, eighth-grade ELA teacher, no knowledge of these facts. One, our children are the lowest in the state because they have no curriculum or unacceptable curriculum. This year, the teachers are excited about the curriculum because they actually have structure and something to teach this year, no matter how misguided it is. Whitman Wisdom's purpose, sole purpose, is to push SCL into every corner of every school. SCL is a psychological manipulation of our children. It was fraudulently brought into our schools under false pretenses of giving our children life skills. It does not do that. It is a tool designed to push CRT methodology. Whitman Wisdom was created by CASL. All of their framework is based on CRT ideology. Indoctrination is the process of installing and engraving a person or people with ideas, attitudes, cognitive strategies or professional methodologies. SCL is a professional methodology. It is also CRT. We have a resolution. We should, we should stop teaching it at all levels, even to us parents, to you guys, to our teachers. It needs to be come out. We have the resolution. There are only four states that requires SCL to be taught. Unfortunately, Colorado is not one of them. What is SCL? The process which people acquire applied knowledge, skills and attitude to develop identities and achieve collective goals. Brainwashing. The systematic effort to persuade non-believers to accept alliance, command or doctrine. Nazi curriculum. All subjects underwent major changes. However, they focused on history and biology, science. Biology became the study of races. SCL is racist, gender and sexuality.
Thank you, Lynette. Susan Chemnitz.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the healthy kids survey. It seems to me that when an extremely intrusive questionnaire is promoted as good and needed to get grant money, the school system that accepts this is not looking out for the children that they are supposed to be educating, but rather they're following some other agenda. The school system has no business asking what level education a parent completed or what sex a child identifies with. What business is that of the schools? I don't think it belongs in there. Please put education first. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Henderson.
Oh, okay. Hey, everyone, it's great to be here tonight. Many of you know I'm a physician in this community, primary care doctor. And as a primary care doctor, I'm going to talk about COVID because I, I don't think that we're, we've heard enough. So I know we're all sick and tired of COVID, but COVID is not done with us. And I don't know if you guys are aware, our hospitals are overrun. It's hard to transfer patients even to other hospitals, even in other states. Everyone assumes that if they get sick, they're going to be taken care of because in most people's mind, healthcare is an unlimited resource. But in the current environment, it isn't. Doctors are leaving, nurses are leaving because we are tired. The schools are a hotspot for COVID transmission. And we know that masking can cut down on this. So I just want to raise a little point. If you guys don't believe that masks really work, go home and do a super simple experiment. I did this with my five-year-old. Go outside on a cold night, take a deep breath in and exhale or cough and look at the cloud of your, your exhalation and see what that looks like. And then put a simple face covering over your face, whether it's a bandana, a surgical mask, a ninety-five mask over your nose and mouth. Take an inhale and do it again and look at the difference. You can see it with your own eyes. Masks are not perfect, but they significantly cut down on transmission. How often was school canceled or staff out of, out of school last year because of COVID? We're dealing with a more contagious virus now and no one has yet to die wearing a mask. So I just love to see our community come together a little bit more on this. Instead of us being such a silly political fight, we have way more in common than our politicians would have us believe. We need to work together to take care of one another. Because people are burning out, both in the schools and healthcare front, and we, we can do more. And I don't think this is very hard. I'm not even going to talk about vaccines. All I'm asking for is a simple mask. My five-year-old will do it, so.
I'll do what?
The district mission says kids first, whatever it takes. At the last board meeting, Ms. Noise, you said, and I quote, "I would like to scrap the COVID plan altogether." Title twenty-two, Colorado revised statute says, maintaining a safe environment is important of learning. At the last board meeting, Ms. Noise, you said, and I quote, "I think we are concentrating on the wrong thing." Title twenty-two also says, "The General Assembly finds the safety of schoolchildren should be a priority of the state." At the last board meeting, Ms. Noise, you said, and I quote, "We need to stay out of it and educate our schools." Title twenty-two says, "Healthy children are more likely to be engaged learners and they do better in school." I'll remind the board that COVID nineteen is less as a, as a communicable, reportable condition. And school staff are by statute mandatory reporters. Also, at the last board meeting, Ms. Noise, you recommended too, and I quote, "Not promote the vaccine anywhere on our district website." Title twenty-two of the Colorado revised statute says, "The General Assembly hereby finds and declares a comprehensive health education is an essential element of public education in the state of Colorado. The school system is a logical vehicle for conveying to children and parents significant health information. Any school district participating in the, in the Colorado preschool program shall develop and recommend a plan for coordinating the district program with family support services, which includes but is not limited to information and referral and educational materials relating to immunization." Title twenty-two of the Colorado revised statute also says, "Ensuring the state's safety of schoolchildren is one of the primary responsibilities of school communities." The graph that I just handed out here is a number of active COVID cases in school, starting November twenty-eighth, after the board changed their quarantine procedures. The board has failed to ensure all schools are implementing national best practices in school safety per their strategic plan. The board has failed to acquire reliable information from responsible sources on their policies, citing personal reasons instead. Title twenty-two of the Colorado revised statute says, "Each school district board of education shall, shall adopt a mission statement making safety for all students and staff a priority." The Colorado revised statute has made clear how intimately related safety, health and education are related. With all due respect, Ms. Noise, the words and actions of this school board have repeatedly and blatantly ignored the health and safety of the students, the staff, the community, and are not reflective of the district's kids-first mission. Nor are they reflective of your code of ethics policy. of your code of ethics policy, which states my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of students attending the public school. Thank you. May everyone have a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thanks, Paul. Aisha Atwell.
Hi. My name is Sasha Atwell.
Sorry.
I am actually an emergency physician. I was the emergency director down in Shiprock for the past three years. I'm here also to talk about COVID and my concerns with how COVID is being thought of and handled by the school board. So I kind of wanted to go back and think about history of Spanish flu and what that was like. So that was in 1918. Fifty million people died worldwide. And at the time, there's only 1.2 billion people in the world. So that was a significant pandemic. And, you know, in the U.S., 675,000 people died at that time. They didn't have the benefit that we do of the great healthcare system, ventilators, you know, antiviral medicine, all the things that we can throw at COVID, which, you know, we have still a lot to learn on that front. What they used was social distancing and they used masking. And they also canceled indoor public gatherings. They canceled school, they canceled theaters, and even church was canceled, which is a big deal, especially considering the context of the time. You were not allowed to go on public transportation without a mask. So I think it's interesting to think about that in that context at that time. Also, another point is in Philadelphia, they failed to adopt those standards for two weeks after a first case had been identified. And 748 people out of 100, sorry, 748 deaths out of 100,000 occurred due to that. In St. Louis, on the other hand, they started these measures of social distancing, masking, closing down public events two days after the first cases were seen. And they were able to decrease their amount of deaths to 358 for 100,000. So that's just a lesson of history. Duke Medical School published a study over the summer when Delta started coming up. And that is starting, they're talking about schools that were in session through June through August. They did this study and it included 60,000 students, just, just shy of that, and just shy of 12,000 teachers. They did in-person learning with universal masking. Eight hundred and eight had community-acquired infections of those people, 64 were school-acquired. For every 13 cases outside of school, one person got school-acquired COVID. Results for that were 2,431 quarantine, 64 school-acquired infections came out of that. So the secondary attack rate was 2.6. That's a lot higher. It's actually 1.0 for masked individuals prior to Delta. Delta is just more infectious. So they compared this to people that were not masked. And the transmission rate in unmasked counterparts was 2.5 times higher. Oh, man. I have more to say.
Send it to our email.
Okay.
Okay, that was, anybody else for, was it? Alrighty. Discussion items, we do not have any. Okay, moving right along. Action items. I'm sorry.
Move for reset.
You, oh, you want to take, okay.
It's only been two and a half hours.
8:45, we'll, we'll come back at 8:45. Alrighty. Okay, moving on with the meeting. Action items. A, do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
And moved by Sheri Wright, seconded by Cody Wells. Discussion.
There, there's one note on here. You might see several times where it says HR review, which is unusual. The reasoning for that is Cynthia and I's vacations overlap. And we want to make sure these people got considered on the consent calendar, even though their step wasn't 100% lost to Estonia. So if you need us to bring these names back next month, we will, but we just want to make sure they get contracts in a timely fashion.
On number H, is that indigenous?
Indigenous.
Indigenous, yeah.
And most of our indigenous kids, we're going to have them.
Oh, my God. That's cool.
Okay. Go for the question.
Fraser.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Hart.
Hi.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Okay. Action item B, so I hear a motion to approve the 2021 audit. I make a motion that we approve the audit. Been moved by Stacy Hall, seconded by Cody Wells.
I think we definitely need to discuss the, the insurance at retreat.
Okay. Can we have that?
We haven't, yeah, I just wasn't really like that.
Okay. Call for the question.
What was the notes you guys just made about discussing?
At the retreat.
Fraser.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Okay. Action item C, do I hear a motion to approve Kiva Montessori Charter Schools' use of Northwest Evaluation Association?
I make a motion that we approve Kiva's Montessori Charter School use of Northwest Evaluation.
I second.
By Sheri Wright, seconded by Janet Hart.
I think this is a phenomenal test and it gives immediate feedback. We used to do it. I would actually like for us to see us come back to it because teachers have immediate feedback. We don't have to wait six months down the line to get the information. It, I, I've used it. It's been great where I know exactly where the child is, their growth. And I was told in the past that it was not stringent enough for our, our CMAS testing. But I think that this would give the teachers an idea of where they're weak and so they can build it up and make it appropriate. Just, just saying that, sorry. This was something I've been after to move our schools back to for a couple, three years.
Just because I'm, it kind of is confusing to me. This is just because they're wanting to change their contract with us?
No, it is, it's a test.
Yeah, but contractually, they have to take the other one, right? So otherwise, I want to.
They're, they're just asking for us to prove it, yeah.
Okay. And I'm a little bit confused on why they're asking for approval. Because it says right on their deal, they've already started implementing it beginning of last school year, so.
Yeah, I don't know why it had to come to us personally, but, but it's nice that it did. Did you give the NWA? I did as director of Battle Rock and, boy, it helped me tremendously because I, I had it immediately. They took it one day, the next day I could go and look at the scores and have, have their grades, their teaching adjusted immediately. And it's fast, it's one day, yeah, it's, it's, it just, to me, it's a much better test.
This is, I'm just curious if this is mostly just, they can still make these changes, but they're just wanting us to change it in their contract? Does it say in their contract which testing that they're using, and we just need to switch that?
Is it because they changed Star? Is that the?
Well, I don't think it's because of Stars.
I have no Star, but I don't.
And no, we changed from Stars to another one, and then Stars was good, because it gave you immediate feedback also, but we're doing one now that takes forever to get, for the teachers to get it back. They can't adjust their teaching.
Because of the bottom, the request.
Do we have?
You don't use Star anymore?
Why don't we use it?
Yeah, we do.
We do still use Stars?
Yeah.
This is the bottom here, says the request of change in language with the contract, will be placed from Star and NWA, so it makes it sound like they're wanting it.
Yeah.
In the contract.
Mr. Leaven, what, what do, your staff?
We have Star this year, early lit math and reading. We do not have NWA.
No, I knew we didn't, do you like it?
I like both, yes.
You like?
I had teachers today from my third grade hall telling me how excited they were to see how much growth kids have made, we had some make a year and a half's growth.
With Stars?
With Star.
So it is the immediate feedback?
It is.
Okay, so I was wrong.
Star is immediate feedback.
How often do you give it?
We can do progress monitoring anytime, what we do, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of year, you know why, right now, we are in the middle of the year. So we're going to finish on testing this week.
Do you see a reason for us, for this charter school to not do NWA?
I can't speak for Kiva, I really can't.
I'm asking for the key, for the test.
For the test?
For the test.
I don't know, are they trying to go away from NWA?
No, they're trying to.
I'm going to go to that. Is the district under a contract with Star?
We, so, and we're not supposed to be having a discussion with the public right now.
Administrator, so I'm, and I.
I know, and I apologize, but it's, they have to get it approved if they're changing their assessments.
Okay.
So that's why they're asking this, because they're looking at changing their assessment to.
Northwest Evaluation.
Right, their evaluation.
That's why I'm asking Roberts, because he has the knowledge of the two, and is it a good move or not, by comparing the tests, not comparing the scores?
See, I don't know why Mr. Pope would be going away from one or the other, it'd be a question you'd have to ask him.
Okay.
So, you know, they're both nationally ignored.
Right.
We just got Star back this year, so.
Oh, you just got it back this year, so you did not have it last year? That's where I was coming from, okay. All right, I'm finished with my discussion, anybody else?
So I'm kind of on the same lines as Lane, so they've already implemented it, and now they're asking if we will approve it, kind of a thing?
It would be my assumption that he's a relatively new administrator, maybe didn't know the process of changing the assessment.
Okay. So he's just trying to correct maybe a wrong, and just get it, and line it up?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? I'll put a question.
Fraser.
Hi.
Paul.
I.
Hart.
I.
Noise.
I.
Rice.
Wells.
Hi.
Right.
Hi.
Okay, action item D, do I hear a motion to approve the annual statutory mill levy certification resolution, CRS 22-10-102, 39-5-128?
I'll make a motion.
Do we need to read it first, or anything?
I don't have it, where?
Yes.
I've got it here, okay.
Stacy gets to read it.
It's the one that I mentioned at the beginning, is in Kyle's report instead of, sorry, I should run.
Oh, I've got it here, if you don't have it.
No, she's got it.
It'll take a minute.
A resolution officially certifying the levy of the Monizuma County, Monizuma Cortez School District RE1, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2022, half fiscal year 2021, 2022, and half fiscal year 2022, 2023, to the Board of County Commissioners, where for section 39-5-128, parentheses one, CRS requires that Monizuma Cortez School District RE1 certify its 2021 levy to the Board of County Commissioners of Monizuma County, no later than December 15. And where for section 39-10-114, LALB, I need to bring my other glasses for now, which authorizes school districts to certify an abatement and refund mill levy in order to recover abatement to taxes. Now therefore, be to be resolved by the Board of Education, Monizuma Cortez School District RE1, section one pursuant to section 39-5-128, parentheses one, CRS has amended, and Monizuma Cortez School District RE1 hereby certifies the Board of County Commissioners of Monizuma County that the school district's 2021 levy on all taxable properties within the county shall be as follows, mill levy per House Bill 20-1418, 27.000 mills, House Bill 20-1418 tax dollars, 7.155 mills, House Bill 20-1418 net mill levy, 19.845 mills, authorized override, zero mills, bond re. Bond redemption fund, 2.974 mills, abated, 0.036 mills, total mill levy, 22.855 mills.
Twenty-one.
I think it was wrong in those, yeah. But yeah, thank you. Section two, business service is directed to deliver a certified copy of this resolution to the Board of County Commissioners of Monizuma County, no later than December 15, 2021, pass, and approve this 14th day of December 2021.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept this resolution, the levy resolution.
I'll second. Sheri Wright, seconded by Cody Wells. Any discussion, I think we've already kind of had the discussion on it a little bit? Questions? Yeah. Okay. Ms. Ramsey, if you can call for the question?
Fraser.
Hi.
Paul.
I.
Hart.
I.
Noise.
I.
Rice.
Hi.
Wells.
Hi.
Right.
Hi. Thank you.
Okay, action item E, policy revisions, first reading, GBGM-E, staff discretionary leave. I hear a motion to accept, first reading?
That we accept this for first reading.
My second. Motion made by Sheri Wright, seconded by Stacy Hall, any discussion?
What days, I'm not following exactly what this discretionary days are now, is this total?
There is a new policy put in place for discretionary days in June. It's.
But is this all personal and sick days?
This doesn't pertain to personals, because we don't, we don't have personal anymore, we have discretionary.
Yeah, they're not sick days, they're discretionary days now. There's no.
No, they're sick days.
Oh, there's.
These replace the personal and the emergency days that you and I know of, so.
But it says sick on here, too, that's one.
Yeah, we're going to be using this form for sick days, we haven't had a sick days form before. I mean, of course, you're not going to know if you're throwing up in the morning to fill out the form, but if you have a doctor's appointment coming up that you could document, this was brought by HR as a form that they're going to be using, and we just wanted to make sure it was on the books as exhibit. So we just took that new policy and added the E to it, so that you guys would have the sample on file.
So this is saying, instead of our two personal days, it's two discretionary days. Please clarify this for me.
This is just a form to fill out that allows you to use the discretionary and sick leave that was changed back in June.
Okay.
Policy was changed, this is the form for our employees to fill out to use those days.
Okay.
So we have a way to track them. This is just the exhibit, so the attachment, the form, I didn't know that we needed to have it approved and added to policy. They have recommended, or Risha, Dr. Radzaway, recommended we do that, so this is just the form to use for the new policy.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Ms. Ramsey, if you can call for the question?
Fraser.
Hi.
Paul.
I.
Hart.
I.
Noise.
I.
Rice.
Wells.
Hi.
Right. Hi.
Okay, action item F, policy revision, second reading. One, two, and three, policies JIBV, IMB, IMB-R. This is the second reading, and I think we can prove those all at the same time if we so choose.
I have a question on this.
Can we get a motion to approve?
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Sheri Wright, seconded by Lane Fraser. Okay, any discussion?
Got all three of these now? Do all three of these?
My question is on number two, the IMB, the teaching, the movies that are in the third paragraph down, the films or videos that are used, how many of the board members have seen these films?
I am, I am the.
You know what's being taught.
Show me where you're at.
Page two or four? No, I'm, I'm the policies of these right here.
I am pulling it up, you're talking about these right here?
RPG 13, RPG, is that the one you're on?
Some videos, my question about that is, I, to me, I do not understand why we have to use a film or a video to teach a subject when we have books and we have literature that we need to be taught out of. And also, if they read and study out of books instead of sitting and watching films to get whatever message that there should be getting out of these movies, that improves their reading skills, that improves their skills of really studying whatever, whether it's history, whether it's English, whatever you're looking at, whether it's the wartime. And so I have a problem with that, and I have questions about that. And then as you go on over to the second page, about halfway down, it says, "When teaching about controversial issues, teacher may express their personal viewpoints and opinions. However, they also have the obligation to be as objective as possible, and then partially present fairly the various several sides of an issue. Although teachers have the right to express personal viewpoints and opinions, they do not have the right to indoctrinate students." Students, again, they're malleable minds, they're learning, and a lot of students value their teachers, and whatever that teacher's viewpoint is, you can bet those kids are going to pick up on that viewpoint. And, and maybe, I don't know whether they go home and talk to their kids or not, but I don't think the teacher should be allowed to give her opinion of whatever the subject is, it should only be what they're teaching, and that's it, and let that to the children to learn what they're supposed to learn from the literature. That's the problem I have with this one.
I agree with you on, on when teaching about controversial issues, teachers may express their personal viewpoints and opinions. I agree, I don't think that should be in there. On the movies? I, very honestly, I'll tell you, I've used movies in the classroom.
We've hurt our kids by having them just sit and looking at a movie.
I, you know, I've used it twice, I would use one twice a year, I would use one after I finished, finished a mythology unit, so they could see how it worked and how they. I taught mythology as a science.
I have the memory over.
Yeah, am I allowed to speak on this?
Yes, you are, please.
So right now, it might be Kevin's fourth class, reading William Shakespeare's Corinna and this, which if you know Shakespeare, you know it can be really hard to understand. Great teacher, she'll still teach us, but when watching Corinna and this, the film, the way it's, the body language and the voice, it just helps you to better understand it. So that's where like movies are at the high school level.
So you've already read it?
Yes.
And, and that was the other one, I used to teach Tom Sawyer, and then I would show them the movie Tom Sawyer afterwards, just recap it.
And they have read the.
Oh, yeah, you read it first, you read everything before you show it, or I did, is that the way?
Yeah, we just finished a day, and there's five acts, so like after each act, we'd watch like that act, the movie, and we just finished today, on Friday, we're going to watch the whole thing as much as we can, but we're done reading.
Okay. So, but I do agree with you on that one, it's on page two, two.
Halfway down.
Where it says the, I agree, teachers don't need to give opinions. That, that's, that's one of the things that we've been fighting with CRT and everything else. So, I would like to delete that line.
And so, are we wanting to approve one and three? Do we want to bring both IMB and IMBR back?
Something I would like everybody to look at, too, that we're going to, especially if we're going to bring this back to talk about somewhere in here, and I was just not trying to jump through here to find it. I think it related somewhere to that we, as a board, either adopt or whatever according to state standards, somewhere in here?
Yeah, that's in the third one.
Okay, so here's the new state standards for fourth grade history class, geography class. Like the people of various cultural groups, such as African Americans, Latinos, Asian Americans, indigenous people, LGBTQ, and religious minorities, migrate to and settle in Colorado, that's the new state standards we're going to. And it's throughout, that's in fourth grade, and they start in kindergarten. So as we look at this, you better look at the state standards that they're getting ready to adopt to, so.
Wow. Sounds like we need to stay a school.
Yeah.
Just saying. So, I guess, Ed, I made a motion, and I like some of it, so do I amend it? Or do, and bring it back for first reading, for second reading? Or do we just vote it down and then make a new motion?
It'd be easiest, probably just vote it down and make an emotion.
But didn't we lump all of them together?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
So. Are you wanting to postpone this one in particular?
Well, I have no problem with the student member of the school. But the other two, I have a problem.
I do too.
Anything that has IMB, I.
So then, the motion would be to divide the question and separate them out.
So.
I'm going to divide the question, first part being to policy D1, second part being policy D2 and 3. Policy D1, second part being policy D2 and 3.
So I need to make a new, I made my motion. So I'm in my motion to accept J I, my address is on JIBB. And separate out IMB and IMBR. And come back.
Second.
Okay. Already had discussion, so. Ramsey, if you call for the question.
Yes. Fraser.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Noise.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Wells.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
So you know what we, what we did. So we're taking out.
So we, we accepted D1. We're picking up D2 and 3 to.
Is there anything that we wanted removed from?
No, F.
Resolution or? JIBB. Our stuff. J I. J I B B were keeping and the other two bringing back.
Right, but what we're doing, do you want to see when it comes back?
What do we, we're taking out the. And 2, 2, I want to take out, when teaching about controversial issues, teachers may express their personal viewpoints.
And it kinda goes a little further, so I mean.
And however, they also have the obligation, well.
So you're taking out everything from students that, or their parents or guardians, and G, to controversial issues aren't to be present. All that, all that comes up.
I don't know, where do you see parents?
It's a sentence. Teaching.
That's where it starts. Page 2 of 2.
Page 2 of 2, yeah.
And then is there anything on this one that you want to see recorded when it comes back?
Art.
On art?
The state genetic, the state thing I think it was.
Well, and you, the movies, did you want something there on the movies?
Well, I, I still have a problem with the movies, but. I mean. From what her example was, there's, there's not anything bad in that movie, but I don't know all of these other movies that are rated R. That goes up to even to the high school level.
X kind of concerns me.
And X.
I'm not saying they have to be.
Also, you know.
Will, shall not be used. X rated and.
Shall not be used.
Right. But, but the, the PG 13 and the R rated movies, they do have things in them that I think that should not be in the classroom.
That's where teachers better use good judgment.
Yeah, and the, and the principal. What do you want, remove your.
If they're under 18, I guess you have to have parental consent.
The what?
If the student's under 18. Parental consent.
Now that's right.
How's that work?
I think that already is the rule for rated R films. If you're under 18, you have to like take home a form and your parents have to sign it or they don't sign it and then you don't watch them.
But that's just a discretion of the principal, right?
No.
It goes next to the principal for that discussion. From what I read in here.
Well, that's what it says, but when I was teaching, we had to have permission slips if we showed them anything PG or above, we had to have parent permission.
The principal will adhere to, will approve or disapprove of the teaching.
Yeah, work cooperatively with the building principal.
Yes, number 2 right there.
Yeah, so he can make the decision whether or not it needs to be and I would doubt that also.
So you want to have it with parent approval?
Definitely with parent approval.
And well, do we wanna take out X rated?
No, no.
It is already.
It just says that you can't do them. I don't know why they.
Oh, shall not be used, okay.
But it says the principal may instruct the teacher to notify students' parents, guardians, obtain parent guardian permission prior to discussing. Instead of saying may instruct, I would say will instruct.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Instead of may, I would use the word will.
It says X rated or NCAA rated.
Yeah, that, that's already says that they can't be shown.
That shall not be used. That's on page 1 of 2.
Yeah.
Is that so far the only? 2 so far? Because with the may, that means we do have to ask parental permission and that the teachers may not give their personal viewpoints.
Right.
As you may see, IMBR that they feel should be changed or. Completely stricken from the policy. I didn't see anything now.
So I'm looking at someone else's policy on controversial issues and sharing opinions. And this one, the teacher may not use his or her position or his or her own historical, religious, political, economic, or social bias. However, if there are exceptions, the teacher may express a personal opinion if he, she identifies it as such and does not express the opinion for purpose of persuading students to his or her point of view. Additionally, the policy states the teacher shall not suppress any student's view on the issue as long as its expression is malicious or abusive to others. I think just saying no, having no opinion is gonna be kind of a dangerous ground there, but I think, I think having a little bit of restriction would be great. But saying, no, you can have a single opinion on things, it's gonna be really dicey.
I think, no, I think that they should not give their opinion, they should teach and that's it.
Well, what they're teaching on is gonna be very much up to their opinion and that, you know, they're.
Shouldn't be.
Highlighting what they're, you know, so totally subjective to that.
What they're teaching should be what the schools put forward for them to teach.
Even when, even if I was teaching you this, I can really highlight some subtle areas based on just how I feel. I, I might not even tell you what my opinion is, but you'll know when I teach it.
I, I disagree.
I, I think it's just gonna get dicey with that, but.
Avery?
I agree, movies are times like teachers are teaching, tell their opinion by their teaching style. I think you can tell teachers like it's not time, like not to teach that. My teachers are willing to teach their opinions, they don't at all. But I think if you like tell people to like, no, don't teach your opinions, it might come off on the wrong way. Be my only concern.
The policy does not say you can't do your opinion, but it says that you teach it exactly as what the, the literature is.
When you teach, you, your opinion will come out in some manner. When I taught, I would. I, I could not teach religion.
Yeah.
But. I can tell you that every student in my classroom knew that I was Christian. By the way, I acted. So I'm not teaching it. And that's what you're saying. You're saying that it's their lifestyle. And, but you don't go and say, I believe that every student in this room should. Go to the bathroom three times a day.
No.
And, and I mean, that's what we're saying. A teacher can't say that. Teacher can say, you know, it's really healthy for you to go to the restroom.
I agree.
And I mean, you could revamp it. So that's avoiding what you're saying. We're, we're not saying you cannot teach this.
You're saying you can't express an opinion.
You can't express an opinion. And, and I really, you, you're going to know what the teacher's opinion is whether they say this is my opinion. But if they have to say something, then they do need to say, this is my opinion and it's not, it's just, um. So I, I don't know. I, I agree with her that it should be. Just, just saying. But we have another discussion coming up on this, so we can hack it out.
When we make these changes, would you guys like to see this again as a first reading? So there's more time to talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we've resolved the issue. No, we have opinions.
I, I think we're pretty much kinda on the same page as far as we don't want teachers to be. Totally going off the rail, you know, I, I don't wanna know about my teacher's personal life.
Well, I don't wanna know how they.
I didn't know anything about them and I thought it was okay. But I, I don't wanna take away too much from a teacher to where they're.
Well, for instance, if you're teaching a civics class, do you want to know what, what your civics teacher thinks, how you, how you should vote or the way they're going to vote?
I, I think you gotta, I think a teacher needs to be as unbiased as they can, but so they.
Yeah, so you know, and that's what I'm saying is, let, let's not bring politics or religion or personal belief into the school system. Let's keep it, let's keep it as pure as we can. Otherwise, I'd have a hate with my child.
Okay, yep, let's just bring those two back. Okay. I do believe people, we have nothing else to discuss. I will adjourn this meeting at 9:24.